Good morning. It's nine o'clock. I want to welcome everybody to the first meeting of 2021 of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. With that, I'd like to ask everybody, well, first, for the record, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the north wall. There's an automatic defibrillator in the back. And with that, I'd like to ask everybody stand up with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will call today's meeting to order. Roll call.
Good morning. Commissioner Borgerson?
Good morning.
Commissioner Marine Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Present.
Commissioner Friend?
Present.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
And Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Item A is the election of the Chair of the Board for the ensuing year. Are there nominations for Chair?
I would like to nominate Mary Ann Borgerson as Chairperson.
I agree. Now we'll second that. Any other nominations?
I was just gonna ask people to mute themselves who are visiting online.
Again, are there any other nominations for Chair? Seeing none?
All right, we will.
Officially vote.
Give me one moment here. Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining. All their commissioners voting yes. Congratulations, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for your support and Happy New Year to you all. And welcome to our two new board members and welcome back to our old board members. I look forward to this year and working for all of you and working together with all of you. So thank you very much for your support. With that, we will move on to the election of our Vice Chair for the Board of Commissioners for the ensuing year. Is there nominations for the Vice Chair?
I nominate Chris Rogers.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Hearing none. The Vice Chair nomination of Chris Rogers will go to a vote. Mr. Clerk?
One moment, please. Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh abstaining. All their commissioners voting yes.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you.
We will now recess from the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and go on to our agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Is there a motion?
Uh, so move.
Please vote.
One moment, please. And for the record, can we get, we had motion Commissioner Rogers for that recess. Who was the second?
I'll be the second.
Commissioner, all right, that could reflect Commissioner Boyle. Motion passes seven to zero.
We will move on to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marine Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Madam Chair?
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. And Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, January 26th, 2021, as the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
Item C, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to Resolutions D through H. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Does that include adjournment?
Yeah.
And who made the motion? Commissioner?
I second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Marine Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Friend?
Present.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Madam Chair?
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item two, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to item three, report from the Director of Corrections, Mike Myers. Good morning. Happy New Year.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you our report for December. Enclosure number one, administrative services. Following, about halfway through the fiscal year, we are $827,488 over our projected budget. However, we have not received our second CARES Act deposit, which should place us back on track for our budget at this point in the year. There were $380,381 spent on overtime costs during December. That's an increase of about $60,000 from the previous month. Mainly, that was driven by several CARES Act, eight actually simultaneous CARES Act renovation projects, which required additional escorts and security staff, and was also fueled by an increase in staff members who were out due to positive COVID tests, which required overtime to fill their posts. Enclosure number two, community corrections and in-house programs. As I've said throughout the pandemic, our community programs have been drastically impacted in how they operate and move forward. We had to repurpose a good deal of staff to continue other essential Our work release, reentry assistance program, or RAP, our therapeutic communities, GED, and the law library, were all suspended for the month due to COVID-19-related challenges and CARES construction projects. Individual requests for the law library, however, are still being handled. Our reentry services staff, which are actually currently in the process of getting back to their old jobs, as we have created a different position to run virtual court, but in December, they were still doing this full-time, and they facilitated 402 court hearings and 46 hours of discovery. We have hired two virtual court assistants so far, with a third to be added, so that we continue, can get the reentry specialists back to their mission and still continue to fill the need for virtual court hearings in collaboration with county and district and federal and other courts. Our 24/7 sobriety programs have been drastically changed during the pandemic to become a largely remote-based program to minimize face-to-face interactions. We do see an increase in drug testing violations with the changes to the program, because we are not having the immediacy of testing and the immediacy of consequences that we usually would have. 68 individuals were placed on the program. There were 2,499 breath tests completed using remote breath testing technology. For our two new commissioners, these are actually handheld breathalyzers that take a photo, uses facial recognition, takes a GPS location, it goes off randomly two to four times per day, that the individual has to take the breath test within two minutes, and wherever they're at, whether they're at work or whether they're at home, and that's how we monitor them for their sobriety, rather than having them come in and do a face-to-face breath test during the pandemic. There was 11 tests that were positive for alcohol use. There were three no-shows. The overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99.9%. There were 45 individuals monitored for 1,010 days of SCRAM monitoring. These are ankle bracelets that individuals wear to detect alcohol use through secretions in their skin. There was zero no-shows, zero tampering violations, and zero alcohol violations. So the SCRAM compliance rate was 100%. There were 47 saliva drug tests administered with two violations, and there were 174 drug testing patches submitted for testing with 67 violations. Our work release program was closed for the month. Our house arrest program admitted 21 individuals. The reentry assistance program was closed for the month. Our therapeutic communities in the jail have limited programming provided by the reentry services staff. Pretrial services continues to provide daily information to the court regarding candidates for bond reduction and early pleas in response to the pandemic. The 29 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, which saved 344 combined bed days. 309 individuals were placed on pretrial release. All told, during the month of December, there were 1,499 individuals who were monitored on pretrial release with a 90% compliance rate. And we continue to participate in a year-long pilot program to implement the public safety assessment as part of a strategy to enhance our overall pretrial release supervision and supportive services. Enclosure number three, compliance. We will participate in a virtual accreditation hearing with the American Correctional Association. This is the formal, where our accreditation is formalized. You may recall from a report a couple of months ago, we did have the ACA auditors on site for most of a week. That's where they gather the data and gather the, visit with our incarcerated population and our staff and tour the facility and inspect it. That's part one of the accreditation. Part two is a panel of elected, within the ACA, commissioners who officially award the accreditation. Due to the pandemic, that'll happen virtually this year instead of us attending the conference and doing it in person. We are also providing follow-up documentation from our recent ICE audit as well. Enclosure number four, personnel. One lieutenant and two officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in December. This includes the retirements of Lieutenant John Morrison and Officer Sandy Reha. Congratulations to them both on their years of service to Douglas County. December was an excellent month for officer retention overall. A class of 19 officers graduated from the Training Academy on December 11th, and I'm happy to report that we hope to achieve our full authorized strength of officers for the first time in several years with the addition of our first academy class of 2021, which will begin next Tuesday. We anticipate a class of 19 as well to begin training then. Sharon Davenport was promoted to lieutenant, and Jade Anderson was promoted to sergeant in December. Congratulations to Sharon and Jade on a job well done. Enclosure number five, our population. There were 1,183 admissions in December. There were 1,130 releases. Our high count was 1,251. Our low count was 1,174. That is, and our average daily population was 1,216, which is an increase. I'm gonna circle back to talking more about our population and the current challenges we're facing at the conclusion of my report. Custodial sanctioned bed days increased a bit to 136. In fairness, those numbers used to be 400 or 500 per month before the pandemic. They dipped all the way down to in the 40s per month. So we did see an uptick in those probation sanctions in December. The US Marshal population decreased. The ICE population decreased. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population remained stable. Probation violations increased slightly. The female population decreased slightly. The fourth female housing unit did remain open throughout the month. Enclosure number six, medical. We conducted 1,039 intake screenings. There were 342 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 16 times during December for emergent medical care. Eight of those were by 911. There were eight hospital admissions, which resulted in 33 days combined of hospitalization. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 63 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 76 initial mental health assessments. There were 62 mental health infirmary placements. Those are primarily, almost exclusively, suicide watches that we place in our infirmary to assure their safety. There were three referrals to the Board of Mental Health, and there were four transfers to long-term psychiatric facilities. Other noteworthy items. Department of Corrections continues to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. We have experienced an increase in positive COVID-19 cases during the month of December, both among staff and the incarcerated population. We continue to follow all CDC and Douglas County Health Department guidance and advice during the pandemic regarding quarantine, testing, PPE use, and sanitation.
Excuse me, Mr. Myers. For those at home, please mute yourselves.
Many CARES-funded renovation and improvement projects have concluded, but others will wrap up during the course of January. We are communicating very frequently with the Douglas County Health Department to plan for COVID-19 vaccinations for our staff as soon as they become available. Unfortunately, due to the slower rollout of vaccines nationally and development of further criteria by the state of Nebraska, we will not be receiving our vaccinations as soon as what was originally anticipated. Unless new information comes to light, we expect our staff to receive vaccinations beginning in late February or early March. We have had increasingly difficult challenges regarding the management. We've had increasingly difficult challenges regarding the management of our population during the past month, as both COVID cases in our population have risen. With several housing units on quarantine and therefore unable to receive new individuals, we have had to utilize our two gymnasiums as housing units, and we have housed new bookings on our court holding floor in the overnights while we await for people to be released the next day so that we can transfer them to an available bed. The rise in our population is primarily driven by the slowdown of court activity due to the pandemic. The number of individuals held on pretrial felonies has increased from 791 on an average in April to over 1,000 as of today. Despite the number of bookings decreasing from 20,000, we were just under 20,000 in 2019, to 16,716 in 2020, our population has risen steadily during the fall and winter months, which is inconsistent with our usual seasonal trends. The cause of this increase, despite fewer people being booked into jail, is an increase in the average length of stay, from 24 days in 2019 to 28 days in 2020. This four additional days, when multiplied by the number of people booked into jail, resulted in an increased average daily population of 183. We are working with our criminal justice system and law enforcement stakeholders to do what can be reasonably done in order to manage our population until a vaccine is readily available and the courts fully reopen. However, there is no simple solution to our current dilemma, and we anticipate to continue to face this challenge for the next few months. We have once again asked our federal partners, ICE and the Marshal Service, to continue to further reduce the number of inmates held at DCDC for their agencies. We are providing names of all candidates, all individuals who may be candidates for early pleas and bond reductions to the courts since trials are not occurring and will not resume until at least March. We have asked law enforcement and probation to utilize all discretion they have in keeping low-level, nonviolent offenders out of jail. We are at a critical juncture with this pandemic, and it's important for all to realize with the steady buildup of the pretrial felony population at the jail, that the pretrial buildup of felony, pretrial population at the jail increases the risk to our staff and our incarcerated population. And finally, on a different note, I would like to welcome newly-elected Commissioners Maureen Boyle and Mike Friend to the Board of Corrections. Myself, along with the rest of my staff, look forward to working with you, to answering your questions about our complex department, welcoming your ideas and suggestions to help us serve, to better serve the Douglas County community. With that, I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. Are there any questions for Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Happy New Year, Director Myers.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for this report. Picking up on a couple of items that you indicated, the staffing situation seems to be moving in the right direction. The effort that you and your administration has made to reach the fully authorized staff, which has been a chronic problem, seems to be almost complete. Is that right?
Yes and no. I don't think it'll ever be complete. We're gonna have to continue to do these efforts to maintain. We won't be able to, I don't wanna relax and get stuck in a, in a cycle that we've been in.
You're a lot closer than you were when you started.
Absolutely.
So, kudos on that. That will help us with this overtime problem going forward. Is that right?
It should. Yes, very much so.
So in this report, the overtime situation is good, bad, or about the same as the last time?
It's up a bit, but that, again, we, throughout the month of December, we had, we typically assigned three or four staff to construction escorts. We were running upwards of 20 staff, and they were also working on more than one shift. There was a pretty frenetic pace going on to meet the CARES Act deadline, and then the CARES Act deadline was extended at the last moment after we had done all that frenetic work.
I appreciate that. And going back to, you know, what we have as kind of a metric in each of your discussion reports here, the average daily population you indicated is up, and we all know that there's, you know, reasons unrelated to your administration for that. You take whoever they bring to you, so you don't really have a control over that. But the population demographic breakdown is something that seems to be moving in the wrong direction. If I see correctly on your report, I think it's page 33, thereabouts, the minority population of our correction center is 63%. The majority Caucasian population is 37%. That seems to me to be higher than it was last time, maybe even an all-time high. Is that right?
You know, Commissioner, I would have to look to verify that. It's in the ballpark of where it's been. It may have crept up a bit as well.
Right, right. Needless to say, the minority population in Douglas County is, I believe, maybe 15%, something like that. So there's a massive disproportionate share
Absolutely.
of minorities in our correction center, and it seems to be getting to be bigger. The situation with COVID relative to the last report you gave is better, worse, about the same?
Things got a little worse for us in December. Over the course of the month, really, we started seeing uptick in staff cases in November. That continued throughout December. We are, as of this morning, I received word of one more staff member who's positive, and that puts us at 199 staff from the beginning of the pandemic who have had it. We have currently, I believe, 24 staff who are out on their two-week isolation period at the moment.
This is something that we're gonna come to later when we talk about the vaccination, but it seemed to me that it might make sense, and I don't know if this is true in the corrections world widely, you would know, that we vaccinate everybody in our correction center. This is a cap- This is a captive population. Nobody has the ability to just walk out. Have you explored the availability of vaccine for the staff and the census population?
So, according to the current criteria, the incarcerated population is down a level or two from where the staff are.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The incarcerated population is, according to the state's criteria right now, we will, the correction staff will be the second group of 1B. 75 and older are the first group, and then correction staff are included in the second tier of 1B. The incarcerated population is below that some, I can't pull that off the top of my head. We have, that conversation is ongoing with our, with the Health Department frequently.
And I think that's an important thing. I mean, widely speaking, in our criminal justice system, we have a problem with COVID.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Your time is up. Commissioner Boyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and congratulations, too. Excuse me. Mike, I really appreciate your report, and I, sometimes I don't like all the material, but I really appreciate how you lay this out. It just dawned on me how useful this really is, so I appreciate your format very much. On page three, you talk about a couple of things that I want to ask you about. Let me ask you, what does custodial sanctioned bed days mean? Is that isolation?
This is, no, this is a, this is, for individuals who are on probation, this is a step in the process. If you remember, several years ago, there was criminal justice reform, there was criminal justice reform, LB 605 created the concept of custodial sanctions
Okay.
for individuals who are on probation. And probation is required, in most cases, to implement sanctions before they violate or terminate somebody's probation. So, these are typically short-term, they are anywhere from three to 30 days, where individuals will, probation will issue the sanction in order to kind of send the message that you need to get back on track, start making your appointments and stuff, you know, or whatever the issue was, and as a way to kind of manage that before having to terminate their probation.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have many inmates in solitary confinement?
Well, we have individuals who are, we use the term special management. That varies from day to day. It depends upon literally what happened the night before as to whether an individual, but those individuals are assessed by a team of mental health staff, by a multidisciplinary team every week to progress them in, to get them, work them back towards general population. We do have people for a variety of reasons that we have to have more restrictions on than others. It could be an serious mental illness that we haven't been able to get a handle on yet so that they are too dangerous to be housed with somebody else in their same cell. However, we do try to compensate for that lack of stimulation by having our mental health staff visit them every day, and we do get them out of their cell for recreation and so forth every day as well.
Okay, well, maybe we'll look at that a little bit more. I, you know, I know you agree, and your education and your profession, you know, deals directly with people who suffer from mental illness and being in, I know there's another word for it, a phrase, but solitary confinement is not really helpful, and I know you know that. So, I appreciate your attention to that, and whatever we can do to help find alternatives to that would be something I think we would all support.
Absolutely.
We'll could talk about that later. I want to ask about the female population. What are the charges for, say, just in general, for most of the female population? Is there any sex trafficking involved or prostitution? I'm always concerned about the women who get jailed, but of course, the men don't.
There are, that's a pretty small minority of our female population these days. We occasionally will have somebody brought in on a sex trafficking charge. There used to be, years ago, there was a large number of women who were in custody for prostitution. Those numbers have gone way down over the course of time.
Okay. And that's what, due to law enforcement, they're changing their position on it, or?
I think due to a variety of, yes. I mean, I think the general, the education regarding that issue has made a difference. And I think there's a variety of factors, but I would say the education and the approach of law enforcement to those cases probably has a lot to do with it.
Let me ask you this. Do you think that some or many or quite a few of the women, females who are incarcerated are victims?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Do you think they are victims?
Commissioner, I would say that most of our population, male and female, have been victims over the course of their lives.
Well, yes.
You know, and I think probably you could, I can't give you, I can't quantify that, you know. My intuition tells me that that's probably even higher among the female population than the male population, but most of our folks have had traumatic experiences in their lives.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I think you indicated that you were wrapping up the public safety bond construction project, and kudos on getting that done on time and on budget. Is it entirely complete? Are you still?
Actually, we get the last housing unit turned over to us on Friday, which is badly needed. That will provide us, I believe, 36 additional beds, which won't, that'll give us a little bit of breathing room and a little more choice. It won't house the problem if the courts can't start processing felonies, however.
Well, again, thanks for bringing that in on time and on budget. That's a great accomplishment. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Director Myers? Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Hi, good to be here. Just a couple of things. One is the vaccinations, I know on the books here, you said it'd be sometime maybe in late February. One way to possibly mitigate the number of cases of COVID would be to use N95 masks as opposed to regular cloth masks. Is that something that the corrections officers have access to?
Yes, Commissioner. We've, you know, as those supplies ebbed and flowed, we've had to make different choices, but currently we have a good supply of N95 masks, and all of our, our staff, while they're in the building, do need to wear N95 masks and protective eyewear.
And then the second thing, I have three things. The second thing is, when you talked about the public safety assessment for pretrial release, the pilot results, can you describe that a little bit, or do you have any preliminary results of that pilot?
There's no results to speak of yet. This is like a plan, a year-long plan to get it launched, so we haven't even done it yet. But for your and Commissioner Friend's education in particular, this is a new assessment which provides much more detailed information and hopefully what we believe much more unbiased information in terms of somebody's risk level when it comes to, for the courts to make a decision whether to hold them on, you know, place a higher cash bond on them so they're likely to stay in jail pretrial, or to release them with a lower cash bond with conditions that we will help implement to mitigate any risks that they, that the assessment shows that they present.
Good. And then the third thing, and it all has to do with, of course, trying to decrease the prison population overall for lots of reasons, mental health on prisoners and in addition to safety of the community doing it right. So, the third thing, I think, may actually fall under the venue of the county attorney. Is there a way to continue to decrease the prison population by figuring out how to get the court proceedings to increase? Can we have, do we have virtual court proceedings? You have that, you mentioned that there was an increase in December, and I know it has to do with COVID and court shutdowns, but is there a way to continue that process despite the shutdowns?
That's a complicated question. So, we've had a lot of conversations with, over the course of this, you know, from March Forward with our criminal justice partners and the courts on how to keep things moving, how to get hearings done virtually, get people, you know, resolved through the process, whether there's a mental illness involved or not. There have been some things that have worked against those with mental illness, those who are going for competency evals and so forth. The Lincoln Regional Center has had shutdowns due to COVID, so that people have had to wait longer, and it's usually a lengthy wait to begin with. There are certain court proceedings which pretty much have to be held in person to protect the defendant's constitutional rights to confront their accuser. And those, you know, unfortunately, there was also an increase in violent crime in Omaha or in Douglas County in 2020. So, we have a lot of, a lot, a bigger proportion of our population, especially since those cases are not moving forward because they require jury trials, require evidentiary hearings that need to be done in person. As those cases, they're just kind of stacking up, and, you know, that's, I had a call with our stakeholders, local stakeholders, last week. I wasn't particularly encouraged as the result of that call. Everybody, you know, is trying their best, I believe, but there wasn't a lot of fresh ideas that were able to be generated. There was, you know, the hope for the vaccine, it seems to be a big piece of that. I actually have arranged for a call with the Health Department and our, the leaders of the court's various offices tomorrow. We are going to attempt to craft a message to send to the governor's office to move the court staff up into the same group as corrections for vaccinations, because they're not in the same group as we are. But their, our risk in the facility is directly tied to their ability to do their jobs. And so, I think there's a strong argument to be made that the court staff should receive their vaccinations when we receive our vaccinations so that we can all move this process forward together, because if we're looking at, I'll just say March 1st for our first dose and April 1st for our second dose.
Thank you, Mike. Time. Are there any other questions or comments for Director Myers? Maureen, if you wanted to continue, you do have another five minutes. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn out of the Douglas County Board of Corrections and reconvene as the Douglas County Board of Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
One moment, please.
I have to tell you while we're waiting for the vote that I was walking down the hall and I heard somebody say, "Boy, that Boyle is really great." And I turned around, and they said, "No, not you. Roth did a good start."
I second that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners Rogers and Morgan. Motion passes seven to zero.
We are now going to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, and before we get started with the full agenda, I would ask that we take a moment of silence for the events that unfolded last week. Never in our lifetime did we ever think we would see such horrific events occurring at our United States Capitol. There were lives lost, people hurt, and our democracy was challenged. They did prove to overcome that challenge, but we still have challenges ahead of us. And with that, I would just ask that we here and those watching, please take a moment of silence. Thank you. And just an announcement that I did speak with Sheriff Wheeler in regards to some FBI reports that are coming out about demonstrations that are going to take place at the United States Capitol and the state and local government courthouses. And he is on top of it, going to be speaking with the other sheriffs across the state, and will be having conversations with the FBI, and will give us updates as things progress. But I just wanted to make everybody aware that we are on top of it and looking, watching it closely. With that, we will move to the item one, A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 15, 2020. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, January 19, 2021. And item C, approval of the resolution authorizing the clerk to make certain payments if a county board meeting is canceled during 2021. Is there a motion to approve A, B, and C?
So, move.
There is a motion by Commissioner Morgan, a second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will move to the consent agenda, items A through I. Please note that item B has been removed from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through I?
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt, just, there was a change on, it's my understanding, a small one on item F8, Health Department. There, it's, Teresa could probably speak better to it than I can, but there's just a small change made to the resolution into the last page of the agreement. Apparently, there was some added signatures that actually aren't needed for that resolution, but, so you should have the correct copy in front of you, but I know posted to the website, it's the previous version.
Teresa?
Teresa here at Douglas County Attorney's Office. So, for F8, this is going to be a template agreement for the Douglas County Health Department. They needed a little bit of flexibility in coordinating with other organizations for the vaccine and delivering the vaccine and getting that out to the public. And to expedite that, this template is being approved by the board, and the changes is it'll be signed by the Health Director, by Dr. Adi Pour, and you're going to authorize her to go ahead and do that. So, the change is to the last paragraph of the resolution, thereby authorizing the Health Director to execute the template as needed, and then we're deleting the board's signature at the very end of the agreement and the Health Board's signature at the end of the agreement, because it's not needed, because you're going to authorize Dr. Pour to go ahead and execute that agreement as needed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Commissioner Kavanaugh, or any item on the consent agenda?
Yes, I do, on item F in general. There are, I believe, one, two, three, four items relative to appointments to the Douglas County Health Board. I would just note that there's been no discussion of this, there've been no hearings on this, there've been no requests for nominations on this. It's emblematic of some of the problems that we've had in the past relative to just putting people on boards without any public discussion. Normally, you would have a nomination hearing in a committee if you were doing an appointment, certainly on the state level or any other level. Those don't occur here. I'm just pointing that out as a, probably a procedural thing that we should address to get, A, some more new people on boards, some of these people served for decades, and secondly, to have public discussion relative to these board nominations. But relative to this memorandum in F8, it's a memorandum of understanding for COVID-19 vaccine transfer to practice facilities or organizations. This kind of goes to, and I think this would probably be more for Dr. Pour than you, counsel, to the distribution question that we touched upon briefly with the Corrections Department relative to... relative to how are we getting this out? This is a really huge issue for us in 21. If we're going to defeat the COVID-19 pandemic, it's important that we have, you know, everybody in the community on board relative to this vaccination. And how we get this out is a is a big question, I think, in everybody's minds. I don't know if Dr. Poor is here. We can have a brief discussion relative to the vaccination policy. But certainly, for our populations in the Corrections Center, our populations in the Health Center, these people are not free to come and go. And it's concern to, I think, all of us that that population be dealt with. Also, as Director Myers pointed out, our criminal justice system is handicapped by the fact that we don't have people who are vaccinated. From the corrections to the judicial staff, the judges and their staff, to the legal staff that serves those people, we have a big, big problem. And we've had outbreaks in all of those levels so far. And it would seem to me that it would make sense that we vaccinate those populations as soon as possible. And I was wondering, Doctor, what the policy is going to be going forward with these captive populations that we have under our jurisdiction and then with our criminal justice system, which is frankly, a bit paralyzed right now because of its inability to function. We can't have trials, we can't have juries. And all of this is relative to the vaccination policy. So do we have something that's going to go to these particular populations as soon as possible?
Adi Poor, Douglas County Health Department. So good morning and Happy New Year to all of you commissioners. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you are posing some really good questions. And, you know, these come from the federal government. ACIP made recommendation, depending on looking at the data, who is really mostly affected adversely from this. Sixty-two percent of our community is above 75 years of age who died. From all of our more than 510 deaths we have had, 62% are above 75. So I think we would all agree that those are probably the most vulnerable ones. We would all agree that healthcare workers and first responders are probably the ones who are highest priority. And that's what the state then has approved according to what ACIP recommended, that those are the first ones, tier 1A. And that's where we are in at this time. So healthcare workers who work on the front line, emergency responders, we have more than 1,000 paramedics in this community. So, you know, when you hear all these different communities being at different levels, always consider what we have.
Thank you, Dr. Poor. I'm going to cut you off here.
Oh, you're good.
The time has lapsed, but because we have that you as a specific agenda item.
I can address it at that time.
We will, yeah. Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note for the record and make corrections. The commissioner made a statement implying his interpretation of what the appointment process is for the board, but the public needs to know for the record that that's not true. The Board of Health sends out the applications process for open seats and makes those recommendations. So nothing is inconsistent with that. So I just wanted to note that for the record so that it didn't stay.
Okay, Commissioner Boyle?
So what I'd like to ask then, I just I wasn't going to, but is there a the our office manager used to send out notices of vacancies? Is she still doing that? I haven't seen, is she? Okay. Well, I've only got 55,000 emails.
I know.
Yeah, all right. I'll try to find them.
Yep, she does.
Thanks. I was going to ask Dr. Poor a couple of things. I don't mean to have her come running back and forth, but.
Do you, is it okay if we wait till she does her presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, again, there with the changes to that.
Most approved with the changes.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will move on to recognition and proclamations, A through E. Is there anyone in the chambers here for recognition? Diane Warnke, who has worked in the Registered Deeds Office for 31 years, is retiring. Paulette Merrill, who has worked at the Douglas County Attorney's Office for 16 years. And I'm going to stop there because I see our county attorney, Mr. Klein, is here, and I'm sure you're here to speak on Paulette's retirement.
Just a few brief words. There's a photo of Paulette. I mean, I talked to Paulette, Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney.
Thank you.
I talked to Paulette a little while ago, and I had talked to her previously about this today. If you knew Paulette, she is a humble, hardworking, unbelievable person. And she said, Don, I just don't want the attention. You know, I said, well, I'm going to give you some attention today. You know, you deserve it. She's she worked in the county attorney's office for 16 years, dedicated and mostly in the juvenile division, did a tremendous job for us, dependable, outstanding lawyer. I never had to worry about anything with regard to what Paulette was doing. She also, in her history, had six years that she served in the Army. And I'd like to publicly thank her for her service. So she's she's a public servant in every respect. She did a tour in Germany, she was a recruiter for the Army here also. So she was six years in the Army. And then she came to our office. And I can't say enough good things about her. It's, yeah, I'm happy for her, I'm very sad for us, because, like I said, she's been a great employee. And I appreciate the board recognizing her years of service here for the county. And we will surely miss her, dearly miss her. And Paulette, there you are. So you're here today, even though you aren't here in person, you're here. And we wanted you to get the recognition you deserve. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our outgoing sheriff, Timothy Dunning, is he in the chamber? I would assume he's not. He came a couple of weeks ago before the year end to to talk to us about it, but we wish him well on his retirement. Susan Burscheid, who'd worked at the Douglas County Treasurer's Office for 27 years. Or Rhonda Peterson, who's worked in the Douglas County Treasurer's Office for 31 years. Again, we have resolutions that we will get to these employees. We thank them so much for their dedicated service to Douglas County and wish them well on their retirement. Is there a motion to approve A through E?
I'll second it, and I'd just like to make a comment. Don's still here, Don Klein. Appreciated your remarks on Paulette, but I also wanted to say we don't have you here as often, which is good for you and I think good for us, too. But really appreciate your work and the great team that you have in the county attorney's office. I really want to thank you for the work you do.
Thank you. There was a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Please come forward.
Luis, humanis 3306, Burt Street. Good morning, commissioners. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I am listening to your discussions, and I'm disappointed with the amount of times being allocated for these discussions. Things that are to be placed on your agenda have a very short period of time for consideration. You can talk to your agenda technician, and that person will tell you that items on your agenda can be placed forthwith by by Monday before your meeting and then be considered and acted on. That's, I don't think that's about building consensus. If you want to build consensus around items and reduce controversy, you have to send out notices. And these things can be, the notices can be in different forms. It could be procedurally. You know, you have things on the queue on an annual basis, like your the seats on your various boards. And then also, you can send out notices on on social media, that that gets a lot of traction. Social media is used often to find employment. So that's a good place to put notices, not just on on the board, the seats on on your various boards, but on controversial things. Because just putting the this on things on the agenda and saying, we're going to have a discussion, and then that's that, we're going to vote on it, that's not going to build consensus. It might get you a majority, but you're serving the public, and the public needs to feel that there is there is continued efforts in keeping our society society whole and building consensus. And so I I don't think that, you know, having five minutes here and five minutes there when a commissioner wants to expound on on the matter and then cut him and cut them off, I don't think that's how citizens want their commissioners to be treated, Madam Chair. And that that's unfortunately, that's like a carryover from last year or the previous year, which, you know, that wasn't good for the for the board, mainly on controversial items on your agenda. Everything else seems to go smoothly. But that's that's going to be coming up, where you consider how things are put on your agenda here later in the month. And I I Josh about Mr. Rogers, I call him Rogers Augustus, because he made the point that he knows parliamentary procedure. He's had the practice, he's been certified, and so what he deems as appropriate is good for the board. But that was in the past. So hopefully, you will have a more extensive outline on how you're going to be doing decision Having giving the commissioners the time that they require to represent their constituency when it comes to discussion is utmost important important. And not just that, that is, if you don't give the commissioners the right time, you're going to get items that aren't that aren't going to be taken very well by the public, and they're going to be passed anyway. I don't know, you know, what that means for this year. But I I do know that in the past, cutting cutting off the commissioners and giving little consideration on agenda items isn't going to sit well with the public. They have predetermined expectations about.
Thank you, Luis.
How local government is being run, and I hope that you will listen to those considerations.
Thank you, Luis. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board about an item not on the agenda? And I would just like to remind commissioners, we don't reply at this point, per our county attorney's advice. Good morning.
Good morning. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I'd like to start off with, hopefully, a little bit of humor. We have a new Board of Commissioners here we might want to refer to as our Friends and Family Board. That's enough of that. But I also want to start the new year off right. We had some comments by Mr. Morgan after we swore into the Pledge of Allegiance to the Republic. And once again, he used the word democracy. If you go home and do your homework, which I've been accused of not doing, you will find out that we are not a democracy. And there are many reasons and many democracies that have failed because of the main reason that the passions of the general public, the mobs, soon takes over the agendas. And out of that ashes of that, such as the French Revolution example, the Russian Revolution, the Chinese Revolution, a dictator arises. And then people are damn sorry for what they asked for. So let's start off in this chamber, which represents us. I can't vote against Mr. Morgan, but I can come to this chamber so far and express my opinion. And I guess one of the legislative items on the legislative agenda that's not printed today is an item down at the State House that will require citizens to be able to have input. On the website, it only says that, it doesn't explain it. What do you mean by that? On every item on the agenda, we can make a comment, or only when you invite us to? Because there have been efforts in the past by various bodies in the local area to remove citizen comment time. That is dictatorship. That's not republic, it's not even a democracy. Those things have to stop. National agendas have to stop. We elect you to represent us. I can't vote for or against anybody other than my own rep, but I can talk about it here so far. Now, on the national thing, since Mr. Morgan brought it up. I am a Trumper, and I am very irate with the national media and a lot of Republicans that have jumped on the bandwagon that our president caused this because of his rhetoric. I watched his whole speech, and I've been to three of his rallies. And we Trumpers do not act like that, and we will not let you make us all guilty of that, just as a lot of people try to make us guilty of systemic racism on the front steps of this building out front, which is a joint process. We are going to speak out about all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, it's okay, well, I'll correct it at the end. I'll correct it at the end. We will move on to presentations. State Vaccination Priorization Plan presented by Dr. Adi Poor. This again is will do have Adi, Dr. Poor, do her presentation, and then we'll go to questions after that.
So good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
And I tried to make this as short and concise as possible. So I'm I'm sorry that I was a little bit too long.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine.
Okay. What I want to do in short is I want to present to you the data, kind of where we are with the cases today, and the second part about vaccination rollout. So this is really short, what we are seeing in regards to positivity rate. Can you hear me, Commissioner?
Yes.
No?
Okay.
What we are seeing in regards to cases in our community from the start of the pandemic through actually the end of last week. And what you can see there is you see clearly that we have seen some decreases. The low is a. The low is, is the week of Christmas and the next one is the week of New Year. And as you can imagine, there are fewer people going to go testing in those days. But what you are seeing from November on, we have seen a decrease, a nice decrease. But we are still at the level that we had in October when all of us thought, you know, we were at a high level. So yes, we are seeing a good trend, but we are not in where we were during the summertime. So I just want to mention that. My next slide. Is let's see where we are in regards to hospitalization. And you are seeing a very similar trend. The blue line is really how our hospital is, these are COVID patients in Omaha area hospitals. And the blue line shows you that, how that has decreased in the Omaha hospitals since November 13th, about before Thanksgiving. The yellow line on the bottom is how many of these COVID patients are on ventilators. And what we are seeing, we have about 45 to 50 individuals who are COVID patients who are using ventilators. And what our healthcare providers are telling us, once a person is on a ventilator, they have a 50% chance not to survive. So we want that number really to be very low. And healthcare providers have learned over the pandemic how to prevent individuals from getting on the ventilators. But I think what you are seeing in regards to hospital utilization, you're definitely seeing a decrease there too. And the last slide I wanted to share with you, of course, is the death. And what you are hearing on the national media, you are hearing December has been a really hard day in regards to death. In Douglas County, it was November. November was when we had the highest number of deaths. Potentially, we had 148 deaths in November and up to now, we have 100 deaths in December. So again, you see it varies by location, but that's where we are at this time. So that's kind of where we are with the data. Trends going in the right direction. And now my next component is to talk about vaccination because we all are excited that that is really happening. I'm missing a page here, let's see. Okay, here. And this goes to the question to Commissioner Kavanaugh. So this is what we are, this is what we are calling Phase 1A. And let me just make sure, as you can see, this is on Nebraska's letterhead. This is what the state of Nebraska is doing in regards to prioritization, who gets a vaccine in our community. And we are, the locals are following their prioritization very closely. And so in 1A, the first phase of this, you have five tiers. And tier one is hospitals, frontline hospital workers. Tier two is the same, but it also is first responders. Tier three is on the bottom and that is just to. Tier three, we started yesterday. So at this time in this community, we are in tier three. We are vaccinating pharmacists, we are vaccinating home health staff, we are vaccinating dentists as of, as of today. So let me share with you what we still have in front of us. We still have in front of us tier four. And you can see there, they are all the clinics who are not affiliated with the hospital system. And when we go further down, you can see there too, frontline workers. That's Phase 1A. And I want to share with the community and with you all, we hope we are going to be done with Phase 1A by the end of January. A lot of it depends on the vaccine that is coming into the state of Nebraska and then is being allocated to locals. What I can assure you, we are not sitting on any vaccine. The moment vaccine comes in, we plan for the next week, how many sites can we set up? So yesterday, we had a closed park, meaning a closed site, and we vaccinated about 1,090 individuals. Mostly those were dentists and frontline staff who is not related to a hospital system. We had the clinic from 1 to 6, it went very smooth. And we'll have this two times more this week and then we are out. We have no more vaccine. Now the state is putting in already an order on Tuesday for next week. How much are we getting? I've already asked the state that we really need a large allocation for Douglas County. We are a little bit different. We found out pretty quickly that 30% of our healthcare workers that are being vaccinated by the hospital systems do not live in Douglas County. And therefore, the allocation to Douglas County needs to be higher to take that into account. So then I want to tell you what potentially we can start in, in February 1. And that is the group 75 years. Oh, thank you. Oh, okay, perfect. 75 years and above. And just so you know, that's in our community, 35,000 people. So we are working with the three large hospital systems, having a call again with them tomorrow to try to see how do we do that. We also want, we have plans in place, but plans, you know, we have to adopt, we have to be flexible. We would like pharmacies to have vaccines so that they can do vaccination and also some of the healthcare providers or the health clinics. So we are working through this and I think it will go, it will go as well as possible. But all the changes that are being made on the federal level and every time we have a plan, the, if the federal government makes, makes a change again and then we have to adapt to those changes. But in general, I would, I would love to tell you that we are well prepared. We are getting the vaccine out, we are following the priority criteria. The state of Nebraska is number fifth in the nation in regards to getting vaccine in arms. So overall, I think a very good program, but it means we still are not out of it and we still have to follow the precautions we have taken so far. So any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Poor. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just as an overall question, does the Douglas County, Douglas County Board have authority to adjust these tiers?
I, you know, I, I don't, I don't think we want to. I think we want as a state to have the same priorities so that somebody in Salby doesn't have a different priority than somebody in Douglas. So the question hasn't been brought up yet, let me say that.
Okay. So that we're clear here, the legal authority to adjust these, you're not clear on who has that legal authority, whether it's the county, the state, federal government?
We have not asked who has the legal authority.
That might be something that we want to clarify. The ability to vaccinate the populations that we talked about before in the Douglas County Corrections Facility and the Douglas County Health Center Facility, these populations of people who can't leave. It does not appear to me that they are in these tiers. I, I noticed that tier 1A has a tier two, long-term care staff and, and residents. That, that possibly could be our Douglas County Health Center residents, is that correct?
That is your Douglas County Health Center residents. They all have been vaccinated already.
The residents?
Yes.
They have?
Yes.
All of them?
Yes.
That's great. Then in tier four, it has Phase 1A, tier four TBD. These have not been set, is that correct? TBD, to be determined?
You know, yeah, what the state is looking at, do we need to have some further classifications or clarification, so to say?
I got you. And in there, it does have, under the community, not health system associated, jail and prison healthcare staff, but not the populations incarcerated. Are they someplace else in these tiers?
The, the inmates potentially are in Phase 2. They will be in the next phase and you don't have a printout of Phase 2 because that is being developed by the state. So at this time, it is correction staff as well as shelter staff in congregated facilities.
Sure. And, you know, as we touched upon before, this is impairing our government's ability to function. For instance, our judicial system is impaired because they don't have immunity or vaccination. So is there anywhere in here where the govern, govern, government functions themselves are in these tiers? I'm talking about the judiciary, the legislative branch and the executive branch, the three branches of our government. Are they in here anywhere?
Not to my knowledge, Commissioner. It's a, it's a good question. It's more that society can function in regards to food and that aspect of it, not so much that government can function.
Okay. I think that that's a real problem. I mean, if our society is to function, our government needs to function. And right now, we are impaired, as you may or may not know. Our judicial function is severely impaired. That's creating a backlog of people in our correctional facility because they cannot be processed through our judicial function. And so this is something that we probably should come back to and look at. Because if we're not taking into account the legislative, executive and judicial branches of government in this vaccination policy, it's going to have long-term effects on our ability to actually function as a society. And so I would say that those are questions that we should probably look into. And if you could get back to us on the legal authority for these, what authority the county board has on these and how we deal with the fact that our judicial, legislative and executive branches of government are not in here at all, that would be great. That would be very helpful.
I would, I would just tell you that we are in discussion with the governor's office in regards to judicial branch. And I have talked to Mike Myers about it and we are realizing that some of the, the second consequences that you have by not having them vaccinated, so we are working on that very closely.
Time?
Thank you.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Hello.
Hello.
Couple things. One is what, do you know when we'll have enough of the population vaccinated or what percent of the population is required before life can quote, get back to some semblance of, of normal?
Yeah, that is a good question, Commissioner. You know, some experts are saying about 60% of the community would need to be vaccinated. So I would say, and you hear the number, I would say if we are optimistic, probably fall. I would think we are children going back to school again, I would think by that time.
And then I know there's this new variant we talk about and the, how contagious it is is certainly concerning. So I anticipate that everybody's excited about getting people vaccinated as quickly as possible. On that line, how are people notified when they are in that subgroup that they are eligible to be vaccinated?
Okay, so we are using several methods to inform individuals that at this time, it is subgroups. We go through association, we went through Metro Omaha Medical Society, we went through Home Health Soci- you know, there are actually associations for most of these groups. So that's how, how we do it at this time. There will also be a registration system put in place, but it is from the state. But that's probably going to be the first week in February. So in between now, we as the health department, we have purchased a system for people who can come in and register for certain events. Because we are realizing, especially for the elderly, we want to make sure that we are not seeing these pictures of people waiting nine hours to get to a site. So we are working on that and we should have that ready quickly. We are also using the media and the media has really been good in getting messages out and the social media at the same time.
So when there's a, a patient who's low risk or somewhat not falling into these categories, who just wants the shot, they just, will their family doctor get ahold of them or how will they find out?
Some of it, you know, we are still in discussion and some of the healthcare providers are, are very hesitant of doing this because they think they are going to be overwhelmed by phone calls and people wanting to have their, their loved ones vaccinated. So we need to have a balance there. Again, I do think from my standpoint, your healthcare, your primary healthcare provider is probably the best person to vaccinate you and that would be in a perfect world, but we are not in a perfect world. We want to get this out as quickly as possible. So there will have to be different levels. We will have to have community sites in the community where people can come to.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing.
For some reason, did it go off and I missed the red light or? Okay, go, I'll give you a couple more minutes.
Just quick, what obstacles do you, do you have in order to, or do you have any obstacles on getting the vaccine out?
Well, right now, the obstacle is not having enough vaccine.
And if there's anything we can do, of course.
Well, you know, it is, it seems like the vaccine is being appropriated by the federal government per capita of the state. So the state feels comfortable that they are getting the amount that is comparable to their population. So that's, there isn't a whole lot we can do. I think once manufacturing increases, we'll see it all open up. Or we have two new vaccines approved that will make a big difference too.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The doctor, first of all, I want to thank you for the excellent job you're doing. I'm a, a big fan, okay? I'm gonna get some t-shirts made. No, I'm just kidding. I, on a serious note, I want to ask some questions about, there's been some misinformation. I, I was listening to national television and one of the things that I heard was that the moderator said to a guest, isn't it terrible what Nebraska is doing about undocumented people and not, not giving them shots, not being vaccinated? And then of course, there was a tirade about what we, what we supposedly had done. And we do need to make it very clear that we do not check, no one is checking the, the status of people with.
Absolutely not. We are not checking any documentation if, if you are a documented individual. Vaccine is free of charge for everyone.
Thank you. That is, that's just what I wanted to hear. There are, I wanted to ask if, I think at one time, 68107 was the hotspot in, in the county for illness. And I just want to know if that's still, if you, is that still the case? It's a heavily Hispanic, Latino, Latina area?
You know, it has changed a little bit and what we saw in the beginning, it was in that area and definitely disproportionately affecting the Hispanic community. What we are seeing now, it's more across the county and not just located in one area.
Okay. Are we doing anything to work with people who work at packing houses and small grocery stores, large grocery stores and restaurants? I know there's a list of who gets, who gets what, but I, I believe, and I was surprised by that one graph that you presented, that I guess it was the death graph, surprised at the number of Hispanics. I figured it, I thought it would be much higher. But anyway, are, is there anything we can do to make sure that folks in that, in the South Omaha area, particularly where there's been some difficulty, where they are protected and vaccinated?
So we are working with all the meatpacking plants that are in Omaha and we are bringing all their leaders together and we are actually going to go and, may not be us, maybe VNA, go in and vaccinate directly at. go in and vaccinate directly at the meatpacking plant. Because these are people who have different shifts and so on, and that's how it seems to work. We are working with FQHC's One World. They got vaccine already the first, in the first round, so that they have enough vaccine to vaccinate those individuals who come to their clinic. So we are really trying. And then, you know, on top of it, you approved our proposed budget. We are going to have vans that actually are then going to go out into the community, too, for individuals who cannot drive to a site. So it's a smorgasbord of different ways. The only thing is, there should not be a barrier for any single person to get a vaccine when we have plenty of it.
Okay. And I do know, I don't mean to speak on behalf of Mr. Rogers, but some of my friends on the North Side, too, have talked to me about, and I know we have a wonderful clinic out on the North Side as well, but is there going to be, are you going to be using vans to go to these neighborhoods particularly, both in South and all throughout the county?
Correct.
Oh, that's great.
All across, when there is a need. And we have, I think you talked about grocery stores, we are talking about to each of the grocery stores, most of these grocery stores have pharmacies, and we are saying, you know, you should be able to vaccinate your own workforce working in the grocery stores through those pharmacies. So those are the options that we are looking at.
Okay, and I wanted to ask, I did send you an email, and I am very serious about it, asking what we can do to help you. And, you know, I voted against something because it was just an informational problem I had with it, but I support very much your getting out in the public and doing what you're doing. So let us know what we can do to help you. So I think we're all on the board. We just, we want to support what you do.
Thank you, Commissioner. I need all the support I can get.
Thank you, Doctor.
Any other questions for Dr. Poor? Thank you for the presentation. I just have one clarification on the end date for, I guess, not being, our community being completely vaccinated, but did I hear you say that by the fall, we're hoping that 60% of our community is vaccinated?
I would hope so. I would hope so, Commissioner. Because like I said, long-term care, we have already vaccinated. I think just about every one of them have at least gotten the first dose. And, you know, we are starting now, actually today, the second dose, and some of our emergency responders. So we are moving as quickly as possible. That's my hope, you know? You can always be hopeful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move on to committee discussion and actions, the first being the Finance Committee. Commissioners Morgan and Boyle, is item one, the budget report. Anything to report at this time?
PJ took some money, went to the casino. Did he have any luck? No, we've got lots of money. We're doing okay. Not lots of money, but we're doing okay, right, Joe?
I don't think there's any comments, I think it says presented.
Yeah. Okay. Item two, motion to rescind the December 15, 2020 county board allocation of $10 million to the Justice Center project, and this is brought to us by Commissioner Boyle.
Right, thank you, Madam Chair. The, first of all, I want to mention that I believe that the people who are supporting this believe that it is a pause in, a pause in the construction of the facility. We are not pausing on the courthouse. There are two separate buildings, and if we have anything to say about it, we are totally committed to building the courthouse. That's what started this discussion. I tried for years to get on the Building Commission exactly for that purpose. I had encouraged the members over the years to buy buildings when they came up near to the courthouse, so that we could control some real estate, and possibly even expand into an existing building at a very lower cost. That didn't happen. Two or three of those buildings are now still owned by individuals, and we're not able to get a hold of them. Even the building that we filed a condemnation on, it was sold originally for a very low amount, and the Building Commission people did not even try to buy it. I also talked against the garage being in the site it is. I wanted it the next block over. We had a possibility with the Rose Theater to do a walkway that they would pay for and contribute substantially to the building, and that didn't get done, so now we're blocked by moving west. We could have done something right across the street on property that was adjacent. Anyway, so those things have happened, that's the past. The reason that I asked this, I put this on the agenda, was that I was not part of the group that made the decision to spend the $10 million. The difficulty with the county board, and I'll try to be brief, but if you get four votes, kind of the attitude is to hell with the rest of them. I mean, you just kind of tell them, this is what we've done, and so there you have it. And it's not a good way to communicate. I've been on the wrong end of that a few times. And so I objected to being told, this is what the decision of the four commissioners, and so now there are three of you that, you know, need to get on board without really adequate, no adequate, or no participation at all. So I was very strongly feeling that the new commissioners, that you shouldn't have commissioners who are walking away in a matter of days, but you should have the new commissioners who were just voted by their voters, and we should respect their vote, and not people who are termed out or out, leaving the office. So in any event, there's a couple things that need to happen. First of all, I need to impress, I've got a great letter from Tom Riley, the courthouse, as far as I'm concerned, we have nothing to say about it. That's the difficulty. The county board can, we have no direct contact with the contractor or the architect. So I'll just say this, that I want to see the courthouse proceed. And there would be a temptation, I think, for the architects and the construction company, I don't want to suggest it, but I guess I have to. I hope they don't make this painful, this pause that we're taking to see what's going on with the juvenile center, and they punish us by saying it's going to be a big loss of money and all these sorts of things. We don't intend anything lengthy. My purpose is to get information and to bring the public involved. And so I've asked Commissioner, the head of our board, and she's also the head of the JCDC, which is all these acronyms, but that's a 501(c)(3) that considers and is in charge of all this construction. They meet in 903 on some day of the week, and they have Zoom. But there's only a couple of people, Larry and Luis go up to those meetings, but it's, and I've heard them, but it's just not adequate. So I want the 501(c)(3) to come to a county board meeting, and any day of the month that works for them, they can rotate, as far as I'm concerned. On a Tuesday, the commissioners will sit out there, we'll be able to talk to them and ask them questions. You know, a couple of times, a couple of years ago, I was talking to the architects with Claire and Mark, and I brought up, I said, "If you're building two floors of a county attorney and a public defender, be sure you put a staircase in there so they don't have to take the elevators to speak to one another." That was two years ago. At that meeting, I also found out that they had reduced the size of the gymnasium, which is really insane. So I said, "You've got to make it the size that's their only recreation." So in any event, I think I've said what I need to say, and so I will stop speaking, and I may speak later, we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I support Commissioner Boyle's resolution to rescind the $10 million takeaway from our CARES effort to put it into this construction scheme. Right from the start, there were no public carings on this. The people didn't have a chance to vote on this. It's resulted in a property tax increase. The representations that were made to us by the private interests who were constructing this was that it was going to be on time and on budget. Neither one of those things have proven correct. And now we're asked to cover cost overruns on items, as Commissioner Boyle pointed out, that he indicated to them a couple of years ago, these are not COVID-related items, these are things that they didn't put in there. And we discussed this during the year-long fight over whether or not we allow this private corporation to take this money without voter approval and apply it to this construction project to cover their cost overruns now. This is bad, but all we have to do today is press reset. The fact that we did a last-minute lame duck resolution to take the $10 million just needs to be rescinded, we need to step back, have the discussion that we never had about the things that Commissioner Boyle and others have brought up, and go forward. Nothing in this proposal is front-end expense to this project. You know, stairwells on a building that's not even built yet is not exactly front-end expenditures. And the other items are similarly later on, if at all, in the construction project. I think that Commissioner Boyle brings up good points about this private corporation, which has kind of operated largely behind closed doors right from the beginning. The Freedom of Information request that was filed by a local news outlet indicated that these discussions were going on behind closed doors in as early as 2016, 2017. No committee hearings, unlike the Public Safety bond that we talked about with the Corrections Department, that had extensive public hearings, put it on the ballot, submitted it to the vote of the people, and sold it with the idea that it would be on time, on budget, and no tax increase. None of that, none of that has occurred in this project. The idea that we need the courthouse annex has been agreed upon by everybody from the beginning. These cost overruns are being driven by the fact that we're doing things that we don't need to do in this project, particularly the kids' jail, that we have adequate facilities for right now at 42nd and Woolworth that we could refurbish at a fraction of the cost. All these discussions need to be had. We need to press reset today and just go back with the new board, elected by the people, and decide what do we want to do going forward. I endorse the idea that Commissioner Boyle put forward, that this private corporation needs to come before us. It's our money, it's the people's money, not their money. And they need to account for what they're doing, and how they're spending it, and why we're running into these cost overruns, which were predicted by me and others right from the start, and who's making the profit off of this entire thing. Those people need to come to us and explain why we should be raising everybody's property tax to fill their pockets. So I appreciate this resolution. I think that all we have to do today is press reset, and we can have this discussion going forward with no harm, no foul to anyone on this project. So, thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My wife and I have, we don't watch much TV, but there's this show called The Crown, and it's essentially Queen Elizabeth's life, right? And her son Charles was Prince, is Prince of Wales. And he went into, one of the episodes, is he went in to speak to the people of Wales, and he elaborated, and he told them things that he wanted to tell them. He came back, and the Queen admonished him and said, "That's not your role." And he says, "Well, I have a mind, I have a thought process, you know, I have a heart." And she essentially said to him, "No one cares." And I don't know how many people care about what my thought process is here, but this is an important item, and this item's on the agenda because of the decision, I think, that I made, and the rest of the board members allowed me to make. So I want to thank Commissioner Rogers for putting this on the agenda, because I don't know if anyone cares, but I have a feeling they do. Here's the, here's the position that I've taken, I've waffled and went back and forth about three or four times on this. Over the last two and a half weeks, I've had countless discussions with each board member, a few with each board member, countless discussions with citizens of my district and citizens all over Douglas County, and then discussions with members, directors of this project, people who are involved in actually putting it together, HDR, KiWIT, the Building Commission. I've had a conversation with three former mayors, two of them are sitting here, and then also Hal Dobbs. I've had conversations with a congressman that I know and admire, and we share about 50 or 60% of our philosophy, Brad Ashford. It goes on and on and on over the last two weeks. I guess the point of the whole thing is, when I first started this, I wanted to find out how this affected the taxpayer of Douglas County. This particular item, how it affected the taxpayer of Douglas County, not the project. This is a two-year-old project. I wanted to find out how this particular $10 million item affected the taxpayers of Douglas County. I think I've come to a conclusion. After all these discussions, I can't vote to rescind this $10 million. And I'm going to lay out a really quick reason why. I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be long. At first, I disagreed, and I think I still do, with the philosophy behind what actually happened here. Had I been on this board the last year, I think we'd be going in a way different direction. I'm not saying that I'm kingmaker or anything else, I just, I think I have different ideas. That's irrelevant. Again, this has been going on for two years, and now we're dealing with a $10 million issue. Whether I disagree with the philosophy or not, to this point is almost moot. The second reason that I, that I thought we should actually deal with this and pull it back is because I disagreed practically with what they did before the end of the year. With all due respect to everybody on this board, I wasn't here, they could do whatever they wanted. By the way, they did this officially, they did it with their own authority, and there's nothing wrong with what they did, fundamentally and practically, but philosophically, there might have been, right? That's what, that's what we're thinking about. The third reason is because I don't think the public had a very decent, at least, this is my opinion, a very decent understanding of what actually happened at that last meeting. With all due respect, I think that meeting, I watched it, and I didn't take much from it. And if I didn't take much from it, I don't think the citizens did. So again, I thank this board for actually bringing this up here to have this discussion. Notwithstanding all of those feelings, the decision was made, the money was actually moved in December to the Building Commission's account, okay? Now, based on my research, that creates a situation that makes it extremely difficult to move money back to the County General Fund. Let me explain that. Without having legal and contractual ramifications, that's the situation that we're in. Legal and contractual ramifications. I don't like those terms, not when it comes to the taxpayer of Douglas County, okay? All of that $10 million was moved and has already been either obligated, or some of it has actually even been spent. Now, I didn't get to an actual number right now, at this point, of the money that's been spent, but I'm going to find out what it is. One of the problems that we could potentially face if we delay or put this on hold again is that the money that Douglas County would owe because of delaying the project further, each month that this project is delayed.
Time, Commissioner Friend? Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Boyle, your second time?
Yes, I, I've talked to Commissioner Friend and others as often, we would visit and so forth, and one of the philosophies that I have about all of this is that I will accept the vote and how he votes, and all other commissioners, because I respect them, and I told them, "You need to vote when you consult your heart and how you feel about this, and then vote your conscience." And so I have no, I'm not upset about how these votes are going to be cast. I do want to say what leads to this is a lack of information. Because, for example, and all the moving parts, there's so many people involved in this, you know? And I want to say again, I am totally committed to building the courthouse and the juvenile center, whatever happens. And the difficulty is that, you know, I went out and started talking to people like Nick Giuliano, who came from Boystown and now works for Sherwood, and there's a building somewhere on the North Side that's a pretty large site, it's a former Lutheran church and Lutheran elementary school, where there's going to be unsecured housing for about 30 or so juveniles. And when I asked him, "Where do those juveniles come from?", he said, "Your place." Well, those are the kids that have not, are not being charged as adults. So that means, that is great, it drops our numbers, but what is left is a group that have, are being charged as adults, and it's usually about 35 or even higher number of children who have used a gun or have done some serious felony. So we have the hardened ones to work with. So then we're going to take these programs that we've found in Minneapolis and other places around the country, and try to rehab the toughest kids that have been arrested. And to me, it just doesn't match. You know, I don't think we can treat these young people that shot at police cars... You know, I don't think we can treat these, these young people that shot at police cars how to bake peanut butter cookies or whatever it is we're doing. There's some great programs, I don't mean to, I shouldn't have said that probably, but I don't mean to diminish them, but I don't think the audience is one that is compatible with what we're trying to do. And I, there's no answer to that yet. They're supposed to be, and I can't get an answer on this. They were supposed to be operating, because of my objections, the Omaha Home for Boys, Uta Holly, and Child Saving Institute as places to take children who have not done serious things, so they never even go to the detention center. I don't know if they're even oper, I don't know. They, you know, but I hope they are, but that's kind of out there somewhere. And then to top it all off, there's talk, and you know, Kim Havakati is a terrific asset to all of this, but Kim has talked about trying to turn in the, turn the Forty Second and Woolworth site into a center for children charged with adult offenses. And that's statewide and have the state take it over. And I understand there's even possibly legislation being introduced on that subject, you know? And so what I'm saying is that, did anybody here know about these things? We, we owe an explanation to the taxpayers. I think the 501(c)(3) owes us to tell us what's going on. You know, are we going to try to renovate Forty Second Street for an adult kind of facility? Are we, are still operating those three facilities to, you know, short-circuit the kids not even going to juvenile? The children are first. They are the ones that come first. We need to be sure that we continue to focus on that and what's best for them. So in any event, this is, you know, of concern to me. And I look at the plans, and what I see is two floors of cells that add up to 64 cells. They're 70, 70 square feet. 70 square feet. I believe that's the same size, I don't know, someone may be able to tell me, of what we have at Forty Second Street. So to me, all we're really doing is painting the cells. I know, I know that it's, you know, another setting, and it's a little bit better, but they're still cells. And that's, I don't know that this is what we ought to be doing at this point, but that's the way it's going to be. So in any event, you know, whatever happens, I do accept it. But I do really plead with Commissioner Borges to bring that 501(c)(3) down here on a Tuesday morning. We won't meet. We'll sit in the audience, and we can really get down and talk about what's going on. Because when I'm on the Building Commission, all I get are bills that already have been paid in the millions, and I, there's nothing to talk about. The money's gone. And I don't feel like I'm being informed adequately, and I plead with you to give us more information. And a good step in that direction is bringing that JC, DC, whatever it is, down here, the 501(c)(3). So please do that, and that'll be a great step forward. I want to thank all the people who've worked on this project. I don't mean to diminish it. There's a lot of controversy about the juvenile center, but not the courthouse. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Morgan?
I had, at the last meeting in December, abstained, and I, like Commissioner Friend, have been talking about the same issue. At that time, I had not heard the $10 million until, I think it was two or three days before the meeting, Commissioner Boyle and I had talked about that. So I had some questions about that, and I know some of the cost was because of the delays and COVID, about 3.4 million and so on. And I believe it's important to move ahead, and I feel like the reason I'm going to vote for this is because in the long, and even the short run, it would cost us more if we don't move forward with this with the cost and the crane being moved there and what's going on with this project. And what I'd like to suggest and almost make it conditional as part of my vote, I'd like, and I've talked to Joe Lorenz numerous times about this. I'd like to see Joe Lorenz, our finance director for more than 10 years, and also Jeff McGill, who's been an excellent person in working on our construction projects with Jerry Lay, but having Jeff and Joe involved in watching these costs and making certain that we don't have any additional increases. And I would like to have all the commissioners agree that's a proper step, that we have him involved. And Joe is willing to do that. I talked to him about it, and he would like to have Jeff involved with him as part of his role. And I feel very good about watching these costs very carefully, so we're not here talking about something additional and hoping that there might be some savings that they may be able to provide as they work with HDR and KiWIT and the 501.
I just want to clarify and ask the clerk, was there a motion and a second on this resolution?
Danish County Clerk, not yet.
Okay, okay. So just, you're in line. So we have a motion by Commissioner Boyle and a second by Commissioner Kavanaugh. And I just also want to, you made a comment, Commissioner Morgan, about voting for this. I don't think you want to vote for it if you're against rescinding.
No, I'm not. Yeah, I was talking about continuing this project.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, look, I just, I, I'll be brief. I've already thrown out an awful lot, but I will be brief. Commissioner, I've worked with Commissioner Kavanaugh for almost probably since 2003. I respect him a great deal. I've known Commissioner Mike Boyle for a long time, and I respect him a great deal. I don't have to say those things. I wanted it on the record. I know what they're doing, and I know why. And I respect the heck out of that, and my thought process is not that far off and not that dissimilar from their thought process. The issue that I have at this very moment, and one more thing. I, my philosophy, and government at almost every level, my philosophy is that we have a responsibility, government's responsibility, is to protect its citizens, to provide a public safety for our society that is simply paramount. I mean, that's, that's government's one role. The second one is to provide clear and effective management of the taxpayer dollars. And on the surface, moving this $10 million, rescinding this money and moving it back to the county board would seem that you're doing that. You're looking at taxpayers in our community, and you're saying, "This is the right thing to do." Okay? Philosophically, it may be. Practically is a totally different story. Again, obligation, again, when people start throwing out contractual and, and financial obligations, that scares me as a taxpayer, and I need to communicate to that to the people of Douglas County and in my district, that that should scare them as well. The fear of the unknown, because six months from now, somebody comes back to me and says, "Look, and by the way, the Jail Standards Board hasn't commented on this issue yet." Finally, commented on it, they have commented on it, but we need certification for this facility downtown, and we don't have it. And if the Crime Commission and the Jail Standards Board does not certify, we got another huge problem staring at us in about five months. And that means we either add beds to this facility or we reduce the beds and leave DCYC open. That's a discussion for another day. Right now, I feel like if we do this at this very moment, and again, I've moved back and forth, but the two and a half weeks that I've researched this, we have problems that we don't know. And I don't like problems I don't know. I like problems that I understand and I can figure out. Finally, we have resolutions following this measure that deal with the COVID money, a certain amount of, a certain amount of COVID appropriation that may have been, I guess theoretically, lost with the transfer of this funding, if you want to call it that. What I would say is, I believe if the commissioners had an appetite to do this, we also can make up any shortfall that these, that past ideas and thought processes might have created for us. And any of these resolutions that follow can meet a specific, immediate need for public COVID relief, and I think we can move forward from there and do even more. But I don't think that, I don't think this $10 million affects that one iota. So, members of the board, I can't thank you enough. One of the things I'd say is, I try to stay open-minded. Over the last two and a half weeks, I think you're tired of hearing that. That's where I'm at now. I don't, I think that there are ramifications to pulling this money back over that I don't think the taxpayer understands, and because I don't. 4.5 million in three months? If the taxpayer has to pay that, I'm not going to ask him for it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Thank you. I'll be even briefer. And so I am voting to rescind the $10 million, and it mostly has to do with the fact that I just don't have enough information on what's happening behind the scenes with the 501(c)(3). I have received a lot more information just over the past 24 hours than I had in the prior two and a half weeks, which I truly appreciate. At the same time, I feel that the, I've asked for just more detailed numbers. I've received a cursory overview of what the money is being spent on, but I would like more detailed numbers just to see what the, not just that specific $10 million will be spent for, but is there $10 million in the budget elsewhere that could be looked at, could be drawn back on, could be cut before we spend the extra money? My concern is not so much that, that the money came from the general fund. My concern more so is that, is this the, is this project going to overrun on its budget? I, like Commissioner Friend mentioned, I want to be a good custodian of taxpayer dollars, and I want to make sure that tax increases are not in the future as far as this particular project goes. And so, but I just didn't have enough, don't have enough information to say that that $10 million could not be cut from the current budget on that building. So for that reason, I would vote to rescind it and, and look, look again at it once that, once I see more of a detailed budget of the building itself.
Thank you, Commissioner Maureen Boyle. Anyone else wishing to, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Situation that we are faced with here is one where a bad investment's going to be made worse, and the private corporation that was created to run this and that is profiting by this on no-bid contracts is apparently going to prevail. The fact that we have commissioners here, you know, two, three years into this project, asking for numbers on this project, I think speaks for itself relative to how little accountability there has been of the public expenditures of tens of millions of dollars. We're, we're running, you know, over $120 million. This is in excess of that. So I just hope that we can, as Commissioner Friend pointed out, go to the front burner needs of the people in this community to deal with the COVID pandemic that's raging through our population, and provide rent and utilities and food and mortgage and small business assistance to those people whose backs are against the wall. They're sick, they're dying, their businesses are going bankrupt, despite the fact that the private corporation has been able to take $10 million away from that effort for this project and not account for it at all. The next items that we get to are really the most important ones, and I just hope that the $10 million that is being taken from our ability to deal with the pandemic does not impair our ability to do these things that need to be done right away. We have a crisis on our agenda here that's not going away. It doesn't have anything to do with this construction project, which is making money for people. It has a lot to do with the lives and well-being of the taxpayers and citizens and residents of Douglas County. And so I just hope that we can go forward on these next items and get that help as quickly as the private corporation has been able to get itself's help on this construction scheme that they've got going across the street. So I would leave it at that and hope that we can do this, because this is a project that is going to be worse before it's done. It's going to cause more property tax increases. It already has. The people are going to have less to say about it than they already have. The accounting is not going to get any better despite what we request of them, because they have shown that they don't have to do anything that we ask them to do. They have shown that they can threaten us with contractual legal implications if we even dare to try to rescind money that a lame duck boat at the last minute took from the CARES COVID Relief Fund. So I just want the people to be aware of what's going on, watch closely, and hopefully, on the next few items, we can actually get some help to the folks who need it during this pandemic that's raging through our community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to? Anyone else wishing to make comments on this agenda item from the board? With that, we will open it up for public comment. Larry?
Thank you. Larry Store, 501.5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. 68132.
Put both of the mics a little bit closer together. There you go.
Well, we finally had some good discussion, I guess, but it's not two-way. But if you remember, back before Mr. Kavanaugh came on board, this issue about the juvenile center and things started coming up. And a local, now-retired judge kicked some citizens out of a courtroom for attempting to have some input on something. And it's been a drumbeat, a drumbeat, a drumbeat ever since by some 501(c)(3)'s, and particularly some of those that are from out of town, from out of this county, from out of this state, because they know the best practices. And here we are today now, the citizens do not have a say in this $10 million. That's not what you're elected to do. Citizens should be able to vote, and we should have more than three minutes to five minutes, and on every item on the agenda if necessary. I guess this kind of proves that some people don't come down here because if it's on the agenda, they don't think they can talk about it. This kind of proves that they can't, because you haven't called me out of order, as some people on these boards have. And some people on these boards haven't spoken yet about this item. Those people are the ones that have pushed it through, but they are not inputting today. I called them up to input and explained why. They go around the citizens. A lot of you are my age or old enough to remember the carnivals. And I guess I was called out of order one day for putting the three pods out here with a P under it. Well, there's card tricks, there's all kinds of parliamentary tricks that politicians use to sweep things under the rug or switch it at the last minute. Okay, we'll give up on the juvenile center if we can just get that whole new courthouse. But the facts of the need for all of that was never proven on the basis of the need for more room for a judge. It was proven on the 501(c)(3) demands for these programs, programs, program for juveniles, but never discussing why. Why do we have such a program with juveniles? Never discussed. But some on these past boards have said we will have those discussions, and we do have statements, but we seldom have a real discussion about it. It gets back to families, people, citizens. And to use the common, well, excuse me one more time, and I'll, I'll be quiet. The words matter, linguistics matter, parliamentary procedures matter. And I am totally angry with the media and a lot of so-called Republicans that have jumped on the board to say, "Those few people that protested in DC, I am guilty for that too, because I'm a Trump supporter." Now we have the threat on today's state House chambers in Lincoln and all across the country. So it's not me that's spreading the fear, it's the media. And what do you think was used in the days of Hitler and Stalin? They used media, and they used lies and claiming that because those people that stormed the Capitol steps wore a red hat, that the whole- that the whole bunch of Trump supporters are guilty. And that's what they're trying to do to us now. And this is a similar project with the juvenile center. Okay, all of a sudden, we'll give up on the juvenile center. We'll put the money to the courthouse. It's still an additional $10 million that we don't get to vote on. And that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I did say that because Commissioner Boyle had spoke twice, I am going to give him privilege to close on this and then we will vote. So don't anybody else ask. I'm giving this to Commissioner Boyle because of the agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. The, you know, things have happened during this meeting that raise questions. This is about communications. And that is really what I'm after. Is more information and so we can hear what's going on and be involved and participate. Because as it is now, and it was a mistake on my part to agree to the 501(c)(3) that worked so well for the Buffett Cancer Center. It's not so hot for what we're doing. We need to be involved as we were in the decision to renovate the Fitzgerald Home and so forth. And I'll give you an example of how this works. The proposal that by Commissioner Morgan is a great one. That Joe Lorenz and Jeff McGill and Jerry Leahy get involved so they can watch the costs. The question is, to whom do they report? To the 501(c)(3) that, you know, we're not... I don't know. To whom do they report? Then, secondly, you know, there was talk about maybe having to operate two sites. We can't afford to do that. If we discover that the jail standards board says, you know, they're going to have to add another floor, that's millions, and that doesn't accomplish what was supposed to happen, it doesn't really focus on the children, same sort of thing. The next is, you know, the county board, and I participated in it, transferred the authority for this project to this 501(c)(3), JCDC. And so when I'm on the building commission, what I get is what has been spent. And there is no comment. There's no chance for me to comment on what it was or I don't know what it is. It's just a bill from the architect or a bill from the consultant. We need to participate and know what's going on. That's my feeling. So that's why it's imperative that this nonprofit come here and so we can ask questions and others can too. It's the public money that's being spent. And let's keep in mind that it's the children that we're trying to help. I look at those cells and I think that just is not... All we're doing is putting a new coat of paint on things and kind of making it look modern. I'm really concerned about it. I'm also concerned about the activity on the construction site that I don't... I can't really see and I can't find out if we have minority subcontractors. I tried to get a man hired to haul dump and debris from the site, and I couldn't get it done. Couldn't get it done. He's an African American. I've known him for 40 years. He's done work for the city when I was mayor. And he still is not working at that site. And I was told that it doesn't look good for you to try to get one of your friends a contract. What are you talking about? This is a guy that is qualified. I don't know if he's getting the job, but the SEB program, which is one that's supposed to involve minorities, it talks about the... They are going to try to get the small business participation and that they adopted the Small Emerging Business Program, which was introduced by Ben Gray of the City Council. But I don't see that happening. And it's a bureaucracy that just grinds. So please, I would like to see this passed, but let me say that I will be disappointed. But it's not the end of the world because I hope that we are going to get that 501(c)(3) down here, get information so we can participate and express our views without having to do something like what I did. I appreciate the patience of the board. I will respect the decision. And we'll figure out how we can get this project moving, but we got to get... Keep in mind the children. What can we do to make it best for the children? And that's what the goal ought to be. It has to be. And let's build the courthouse, which is what I asked for when I got on the board. I immediately went to Commissioner Borges and said, "We have to build a courthouse." And she took action. And we started doing things. And so I appreciate her involvement. It's been very important. So thank all of you and let's see how it goes. And maybe we'll get Commissioner Friend to rethink his position. I'm just kidding. Again.
There is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion fails. Commissioners Kavanaugh and Maureen Boyle and Mike voting yes to rescind, all their commissioners voting no.
Thank you. We'll move on to item three. And before we begin the discussion of the next few resolutions, I would ask if Patrick and Joe would come forward to just give a brief overview of where we are with the dollars that we will be speaking of. I am going to be asking for a more detailed presentation of where all of our CARES Act dollars had gone, who we distributed them to, and in a PowerPoint-type of presentation for next week or the week after. But for today, before we start this discussion, I think it's important for Joe to give us an overview. So, Joe?
Yeah, some updates on the CARES Act. I think most of the commissioners are aware. We're aware that in late December, the word came out from Washington that the spending deadline for CARES Act expenditures was extended a year to December 31, 2021. Now, most of our money was allocated and a great, great proportion of it was spent. And there were certain projects were out there that weren't completed that now we're giving people the ability and we're basically telling them to get it done in the first quarter of this year so that we would spend the funds to complete the projects which we were allocated. Now, there's a couple of things here specifically about rental assistance and utility assistance. And just to give the commissioners an update where we were on our two programs. On the Rental Assistance Program, I think we have about... We spent about $7.7 million, the $10 million allocated for rent assistance. So I think we have about $2.3 million that was not spent. And on the $4 million for utility assistance that we worked with Dollar Energy on to reimburse MUD and OPPD, we actually did better. We wound up spending... The $4 million, we spent like $3,950,000. So the great majority of that money was spent. So that's where we are on those programs. And I know there's some resolutions here to extend those programs. But what the other thing we want to talk about today, and Patrick will get into some more details, is that there is additional CARES Act money that was allocated specifically towards rental and utility assistance. And again, it's kind of like the... It's new money. You know, this is the only new money that's officially been put out there right now. So the state of Nebraska, for the entities in it, will be receiving approximately $200 million for rent and utility assistance. And there's the states eligible to get money. Douglas County, we were the original two, but they lowered the threshold back down to a population of 200,000. So Lancaster County is eligible, the city of Omaha is eligible, and the city of Lincoln is eligible. So that's the pool that's going to split this $200 million. So we don't have the exact formula, so we can't tell you how much we'll get. But there's speculation out there that we could get anywhere from $10 to $20 million. And it would be specifically earmarked for rental assistance and utility assistance. And it would be new CARES Act money. So that's something to contemplate as we look at some of these resolutions that are out there that are saying, well, we should, you know, fund these programs from the current general fund reserve is knowing that there's... We are going to be getting new money for these specific programs that would be CARES Act money that we could reinstitute funding for that. So that's coming. And now I'll let Patrick talk about some other aspects of it.
Actually, we have several resolutions to allocate general fund reserve money for programs that will help people in need. And I think my thought process is, and, you know, it's up to the board, but it doesn't have to necessarily be limited to somebody who has to prove that they were negatively affected by COVID-19 necessarily. What the thought process is, we would provide general fund reserve money to nonprofits. Nonprofits would provide assistance, as they normally do, to those in need, whether it be rent assistance or food. And because it's general fund reserve money, we would not be bound by the CARES Act requirements. Now, further down in the resolutions, we'll talk about the authority you'll give me hopefully to apply for the CARES Act money. Well, it's not really CARES Act necessarily. It's federal grant money, but that will have strings attached. When we allocate that money to a nonprofit, there will be strings attached for who can apply for that money. It will have to be, I'm assuming, COVID-19-related. So the first item is number four. No, number three. Number three. And that is our quest to allocate $2 million of the county's general fund reserve to OCF, that's Omaha Community Foundation, to distribute to locally-owned small businesses. And I don't want to steal what Commissioner Kavanaugh's done, or maybe you want to talk about it. And then I will just say that OCF... A representative from OCF is here. And they did want to talk about the amount because their concern is that the amount may not be enough to accomplish what the intent is. But I'll just let Commissioner talk about it.
Just a second, please. If you're done with your opening remarks on the whole thing. And Joe, are you... Where did Joe... You're done? Okay. So we will now move on to each of the resolutions. First being the first one, as Patrick just talked about, in moving $2 million from the general fund reserve to Omaha Community Foundation to distribute to locally-owned businesses in Douglas County in food, beverage, entertainment, and hospitality industries, which have been severely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And this is sponsored by Commissioner Kavanaugh. So Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. And I believe my colleague, Commissioner Boyle, joins me in this. And any other commissioners are certainly welcome to join in. The more support we have, the quicker we can get these struggling businesses, the help they so desperately need. One of the things that we weren't able to do much on in the 2020 CARES Initiative was directly help small businesses. These are for-profit businesses in our community, particularly ones who are engaged in the food, beverage, entertainment, hospitality areas of our economy that have been so heavily impacted by the COVID pandemic. It's no secret. You all know that the restaurant industry, particularly in Omaha and Douglas County, has been severely impacted by the pandemic. Restaurants have closed. People have gone out of business. People are laid off and furloughed that service those businesses. This is an attempt to make up for what we weren't able to do much of in 2021 in the first quarter of 2020, in the first quarter of 2021, so that we can save as many of those businesses as possible, put people back to work. These are taxpaying mom-and-pop entities that are the backbone of our economy. And we need to help them as soon as we can. So in conversations with the Omaha Community Foundation, who has been of great assistance to us in administering CARES assistance programs in 2020, we've discussed this. And the executive director, Donna Kush, is here. And I'd ask her maybe to come down and join us for a brief explanation of what we're trying to do here. Because we're no longer constrained by the CARES Act with these monies that we have lapsed, as Joe Lorenz and Patrick Bloomingdale indicated, from the unexpendited CARES appropriations in 2020 into our general fund in 2021, we can make a much quicker and more efficient distribution of these monies to people. The Omaha Community Foundation has experience in this, having just come off a very successful program. And thank you, Ms. Kush, for coming here today. Could you just give us a brief overview of the experience that was very successful in 2020 that the Omaha Community Foundation assisted us in administering?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Donna Kush, President and CEO of the Omaha Community Foundation. In 2020, as Commissioner Kavanaugh just said, we were fortunate to be able to partner with you to run a program that provided $28 million in grants to nonprofits in our community. I'll give you just a summary of that program. Overall, about 320 nonprofits benefited from that and literally were able to keep their employees employed, able to keep their lights on, able to keep their rent paid. This really helped sustain them. As they got through this, they weren't able to host their normal number of fundraisers, do their normal type of fundraising activities, and just other revenue streams that they have that, you know, that they just were not able to do. So it was very beneficial. It was, you know, sectioned into two programs. The first program, about a third of the $28 million was distributed through an expense-based program. And we followed the Treasury guidelines for that, of course. And then the second phase of the program were stimulus grants, which was extremely helpful for those small nonprofit organizations. In fact, about $4 million nonprofits, small nonprofits benefited from... I'm sorry. $4 million went to benefit small nonprofits through that stimulus program. So, and I want to recognize Ann Meisenberg here on my team. She co-led that with Emily Nguyen. And without their leadership, this wouldn't have been possible. They were critical, instrumental in leading our community foundation through that effort and helping the nonprofits through that grant-making process.
Thank you. So this would take $2 million of these monies, which are essentially CARES monies carried over, and put it into a program administered by the Omaha Community Foundation and administrative partners that they will bring onboard to, as quickly as possible, get grants to struggling, first and foremost, restaurants, small...
Time, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Sorry?
That's okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Kush, thanks for the information. What I was going to ask, and I'll be brief. I've said that before today, haven't I? Didn't turn out very well. What do the parameters look like? Commissioner Kavanaugh probably alluded to it. It might have slipped through my minuscule brain. What do the parameters look like? So in other words, the government forced a lot of these organizations to actually shut down at a certain period of time. Is that a parameter? So in other words, if the long arm of government came in and said, "Boom, you're down", and there was about three months where it actually did occur, is that a parameter? Is another parameter the amount of money that... The amount of revenue they lost? Is a third parameter that they have to show that they're struggling in some certain, you know, way, shape, or form? What type of business they are? Like an Applebee's can't walk in here and do it. So, real high level, what do some of those parameters look like?
Yeah. And you're actually hitting on a concern that, which is the dollar amount. I mean, we have a concern with that. But we understand if this is intended to be $2 million to help out maybe those smallest, you know, food, beverage businesses, then we'll start with that. We'll start with the $2 million to help them. To answer your question, though, yes, we are looking at probably assessing their sales tax payments that they've made. If not for certain quarters of last year, then perhaps for the entire year. And we would do a comparison of 19 to 20 in those payments. That's one consideration that we've had. We've also talked about, yes, could it be non-franchised to make sure that we do really assist those mom-and-pop type of organizations, as Commissioner Kavanaugh said, and make sure they're locally owned? And yes, you know, do they have a drive-through? That might be a consideration because someone who had a drive-through may not have been impacted nearly as much as someone who, literally, as you said, Commissioner Friend, had to shut down for, you know, a good period of time last year. So those are all things that we are working on. And first and foremost, it depends on the total dollar... the total dollar amount. And then also, we wanted to make sure we were clear on what your focus is, because, you know, first and foremost, the dollar amount really dictates how many people we can assist, of course, because you don't want to run a grant program that's so small, it's really not even, you know, worth it, so to speak, to, to, you know, because the grants are so small, that, and the administrative time to administer it just aren't worth it. So, we want to make sure we have the right size of, of funding available to help the right amount of people, and, and marry that up.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Donna, you, you're telling me you, you've got a staff big enough to look through tax returns and do this?
So, that's a very good point, Commissioner Rogers. And Jim Rife from Nebraska Enterprises Fund is here with me today. They're a nonprofit organization that some of you may be familiar with. They provide not only loans to small businesses, but they provide technical assistance in helping them run their business. So, they, yes, so you bring up an excellent point, I'm glad you mentioned this, because they are going to be a critical partner to us with this. We're Omaha Community Foundation, we're known for helping nonprofits, but the other expertise we have is in grant-making. So, where we come in is we will help, we'll provide the portal, the grant portal, and all the infrastructure that goes into that, which is like submitting your tax returns, submitting your, adding your W-9 to the portal, so that all this information can go into that. And then we would also be responsible for the project management behind it, to make sure we stay, you know, within the guidelines we set forth, and within the budget, and do this, set this all up correctly. And then Nebraska Enterprise Fund, who we've already engaged and had discussions with, Jim and his team, would be the ones to provide the technical assistance behind us. So, when it comes to looking at those, those sales tax forms, or other types of, you know, information that we might want them to provide, they also have, you know, similar to what they do every day, they're also prepared to provide one-on-one type of assistance to small business owners, to help ensure that, that they can provide the right financial information in the timely manner that we're going to need it.
So, another point I want to make on this, and before I go to this at the end, is you assisted us with nonprofits. Totally different distinction, because this is for-profits. What's, what's different, what's this going to do different that PPP is not going to do? Because there's more PPP money in there, in the stimulus bill. That's one of my issues. Just let me say, I don't, I understand the effort that needs to be done, but I think it needs to be said, because it was in, I think the statement was made, that the CARES Act money did not allow us to help businesses. That's not true. We could have used it to help businesses, but the board made a decision, because realistically, and this is my opinion, 166 million would not have been enough to solve the business need in Douglas County. We were having people coming to us, saying that we should use CARES Act money to provide PPE for the entire business, and this is, and this is not, not the PPP fund, but PPE for the entire Douglas County and the board side not to do it. You know, I want to ask my fellow board members not to support this on the realm that it's not a good cause, it is. But the fact is, you know, I like to know, I mean, 2 million dollars, I know some of these particular people in this industry, I mean, two of them can probably soak this money up on what they would have made on a College World Series weekend. I mean, this is like dropping water in the safari desert. And I'm not saying the need's not there, but one, you got PPE funding that's still there. And, you know, the, the other piece to it is, we didn't, the state of Nebraska took this role on, and they made money available. And my understanding is the state of Nebraska has 300 million dollars left that they have not allocated. So, you know, when the board decided to go down this route, we dealt in realms that we were familiar with, and that we were consistent with. General assistance in doing the housing stuff, that was in our realm. 262 money and helping these various people, but they were more nonprofits, not the for-profits. I think there's a big distinction in the nonprofits and the for-profits, because even, there was a whole thing in the stimulus package about reducing the amount of taxes that they would have to pay on the PPE pieces. So, I think there's a big distinction on what we're laying out here between for-profits and the nonprofits. I would say to my fellow board members, you know, we should postpone this, just because I know I get calls from people in my district about just businesses in general. So, now we're going to pick a winner in the entertainment and tourism industry when there's others that's there, and realistically, this is not going to solve it, and I think we need to be looking for the state to allocate some of that money that they're doing, and if the state wanted to do it, they could do appropriations through their budget to do it. So, again, it's not that it's valiant, but it's going to put all of us at a disadvantage of picking an industry over another, and this won't be the last that comes, and we don't have the funding to do that.
Time, thank you. Commissioner Boyle, Mike Boyle?
I, I do support this. I think, listening to Donna, maybe we should be raising the dollar amount. This is intended to help businesses that I've heard from that don't have, cannot get access. I mean, I've referred Congressman Bacon's staff, which is very competent, and it just, it doesn't work sometimes. So, I, I think it's really important, and, you know, and I do realize that the, the state has a lot of, a lot of money left over, 300 million is what I've heard, too. But try to, try to get a, try to get a couple hundred thousand out of them. I mean, I'm telling you, they're just like, they treat us like we're, you know, some of the demonstrators that were Washington, at Washington a couple days ago. We, we won't get any money from the state for this, that's a pie in the sky. If I thought we could, we would have done something, but you can't, they just won't help us. So, I, I know they won't, because we got the money, 100 and some million dollars, and I think we should have, we should handle it. So, that's my view. The other thing is, you know, this oddly enough would help a lot of minority operations. You know, if you look down 24th Street, there's places that are just hanging on, and I know that the short-stop chicken place just opened, I have family members that drive there and rave about their food, and waiting in the lines. But they're operating, but I don't know how close it is, they've got a drive-through, so that helps. But there are other places, too. I know on Leavenworth Street, I don't, I used to go there to eat, they had a good, good kitchen. The Marley Bone is closed. And you look at, at, you know, shoe shops and different places that are just hanging on by their, you know, their shoestrings, pardon the pun, but they need to, they need this kind of help. And a lot of them are mom and pop and small operations, be a one, one-stop coffee shop someplace, or whatever, down the old market, you just never know. In any event, I think we need to, we should spend this money, and I, I guess I would ask, ask Joe Lorenz if he thinks, and maybe you as well, is this enough, or should we go for more money? And what do you think, Donna?
It just depends on what pool size of, you know, and how big you want that assistance to be. So, for example, if you took the 2 million for, for 40, you know, businesses, or let's say 50 businesses, that's, that's $40,000 each.
Yeah.
Now, that might sound like a lot, but when these businesses had PPP last year, that only got them through the first few months, you know, they struggled to try to find new ways to, to operate their business then the remainder of the year. And so, I think that's important to remember, that yes, there may be new PPP coming, but we, we have to think about, they've been struggling to pay rent, and many of them haven't been able to pay rent the last, you know, the latter part of the last year.
Right.
So, this is helping them just, again, stay open. So, you know, I just do that math when you think about the number, because then that's going to determine how much, you know, how many businesses we can actually help. And to answer your question, too, Commissioner Boyle, in terms of equity, we could run this so that, similar to our nonprofit human services organizations, where we applied a factor to the assistance, to say, if you're in those ZIP codes that were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, then you perhaps get a certain percentage more of assistance than the other businesses. So, that's just one thing to think about if we want to run it that way.
Well, okay, well, I mean, maybe we ought to go, you know, go to 4 million instead, something like that, I don't know, but it seems like that's what you're saying, suggesting. And, and I said, Joe, what do you think? Is this something that we should, are you saying we should wait until we get these funds in 45 days, or whatever it is?
We're not going to get, at this point, we wouldn't be getting any money. This is, as Commissioner Rogers said, this is kind of like PPP money for private businesses. We're not, at this point, there's no new money allocated to us for this. I mean, there is new money, we're going to get for rental assistance and utility assistance, and here the issue is, in the CARES Act, we kind of made that conscious decision not to give money to private businesses, and so now we have a pool. We did transfer the 26 million presumptive salaries over, and now we, but we basically funded 10 million of that, so there's, there's 16 million there. So, then I guess it's up to the commissioners how they want to allocate that 16 million and what you think is appropriate, but just from my point of view, 2 million for private businesses is, is a drop in the bucket.
Well, I agree, that's why we should probably go to floor, and I'm trying to talk fast before the red light comes on, but I don't want this to be so restrictive, I really cannot, I'm so grateful that you're involved, and, you know, I mean, this is really perfect. So, I, I'm really much in favor of this, and I think, you know, I see these businesses drowning, they are still getting bills for their property taxes, and all of that.
Time, thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you.
Commissioner Maureen Boyle?
Just to kind of continue on that, I, I agree to a degree with Commissioner Rogers, is once you open the floodgates, then you don't know who's going to be coming, but I think I would support something like this, because I think there's a big sense of urgency to get money out to people, and I think that we have access and the ability to do that as, as the local government. So, the, the question I have, and it's not, not for you so much, it's, it's for administration here, but if we approve these, how quickly can we get money to these organizations that can distribute it? Are we talking days, are we talking weeks?
I can, yes. So, for example, the 28 million last year, we were able to get distributed in about three to four months. So, assuming you make a decision at the next, we, we come back with a more formal proposal based on the dollar amount you decide on, we would come back in two weeks with sort of more of an agreement type and, and scope of work of how this might work. And then from there, it takes, you know, probably a couple weeks just to get the grant portal up, to make sure we've got the right parameters and infrastructure in place for it. I would keep this portal open two weeks, like we did the nonprofits, and then we do an assessment after that for a couple weeks, make sure we've got all the information, follow back up with any businesses, there's, where there's incomplete information. But to answer your, the short answer to your question would be, you know, a couple months, it would be a few weeks from start to finish.
Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator, let me just clarify one thing that Donna said, and that is the resolution does allow, if the county board approves it, as the other resolutions do, too, for staff, myself, to negotiate the contract and have it be signed by the chair without need to come back to this board for approval, and the, and the intent of that is to speed it up, so we don't have to wait two weeks, come back to the board, hopefully it's done, maybe it's not. So, we want to, we want to just have a very simple contract that we can negotiate, have the chair sign it, and get it implemented as soon as possible, whether it be this resolution or the ones that we're going to be talking about next.
So, Patrick, does that imply, then, that even the rest of the items on here, similarly, within a couple of weeks, we could have a signed contract to distribute the, the funds?
That's the hope, that, the hope is that we can get it, you know, working with the county attorney's office, is because it's general fund money, because it's not tied to, to the CARES Act, that we could speed up the process, we won't have to have this lengthy statement of work that we had for the CARES Act. Hopefully, it can be something much simpler, and I can't guarantee how quickly we can get it done, but, but the intent of that language at the end of the resolutions is that we don't have to come back for the board, that we can just be empowered to get it done.
Yeah, I think time is of the essence here, and I think that's, that's why something like this is important to pass.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
You mentioned the other money that's going to be- Made available in the next day or two, supposedly.
Well, we're going, we have to apply by the end of the day today, and then we send it into Washington, and they see all who, who applies, and then they're going to apply a formula, which they have, it's shared, and it'll be kind of like the CARES Act money, where I think one day, the money, they just wire the money to our account. And I, I know the state of Nebraska is going to be allocated 200 million dollars, and how that gets split between the entities, we're not sure of yet.
Do you have a feeling we should be, I mean, waiting to find out what we're going to have, because we're going to, it looks like be able to do more?
Well, we aren't going to get money for this particular one. I mean, I, when I was talking before, I was saying, before we allocate general fund money to rent and utility assistance, I think we should wait and see what we're going to get, because that's what this new federal money is earmarked for.
Is it, and for the small businesses, I assume they're going to have a program that people go to their banks, the banks help them get the monies to continue their operation, as they did before.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, since we've never been dealing with for-profits, I'm not an expert on that, but I know there is a, a new PP and E, a PPP program out there, too, but I'm not, I don't know the specifics of it.
Right, but that's what was available last spring to businesses-
Yes.
-in our community, and I know a lot of them, and they do it through the bank-
Right.
-is how they go about it. Also, I just want to clarify my own position. I talked to Frank Daley, Accountability and Disclosure, probably six weeks ago, and I want to state it publicly, he told me I would have to abstain on that kind of money going because of leasing involved on 13th Street with some of the businesses there and ownership, that I cannot be, even asking questions on that kind of thing with the food and beverage situation. So, I'm respectful of what he said, I called him to be sure, because I was told I needed to be careful about that. So, I hear what you're saying about the rental assistance, because I wasn't supportive of the mortgages, the resolution says, number five, when Jim and I, Commissioner Kavanaugh and I talked, because that's a pretty slippery slope when you start looking at that situation, but I was supportive of putting another 2 million into the rental monies.
Yeah, I would assume we'll get more than that from the fed, federal government.
So, I want to support your position on the rental of what you just said, because of that money coming down, and not taking it from our general fund, and also what Chris said on doing the small business, we can't make, you know, much of a real contribution there. So, we'll see what happens. Donna, thanks for all the work you've done, I told you that before in an email and some other times, you've been a tremendous help this last year.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan.
And your team.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Donna, you and I have had some discussions relative to the setup that you, you're going to do regarding the qualifications. The idea here is, let's do something today, the crisis is here today. I think research has been done and discussions have been had with you, Senator Hare, and others in the restaurant community, to get that portion of this as soon as we can. The idea would be to scale the requirements so that the smaller mom and pops, as we've described them, would be on the receiving end of this ASAP. The 2 million dollars is a start, it's a floor, not a ceiling. We need to do something here today to get that, I think there's a consensus to go ahead with that, and a comfort level with the great work that you and the Omaha Community Foundation and the enterprise folks have done, and will do for us, to get this stood up. Patrick's confident that the staff can get a contractual agreement drafted ASAP, so that we're talking about days, not weeks or months, to get these people who are struggling to stay afloat, some help. Whether or not the, the stimulus package that was passed in December allows us to do this, it's not going to allow us to do it in January, probably not in February. We need to act today, and like I said, I think there's a consensus to go ahead with this 2 million, so I have confidence in you based on the experience that we've had, and the success that you've demonstrated with the 28 million that you've already distributed in our community. This is an important initiative to go forward with today, and try to get this out if we need more, and I anticipate that we will. You know, we hold meetings almost every week, and so we can certainly revisit this. We have, over the 2020 CARES experience- We have, over the 2020 CARES experience, initiated additional expansions of programs, both in the rent and utilities and the not-for-profit world, and we could certainly do that again. So thanks for this. I would think that we could go ahead today and vote on this important beginning of the bridge financing between what happened in 2020 with CARES that didn't reach this community, except for, I believe, seven for-profit entities that we distributed about $350,000 to in the entertainment business right at the end. That we could start with these small restaurants at the beginning of this, and that we could get them some money in January. That would be huge, that would be a great accomplishment. We could feel proud of getting something done here today at our initial 2021 meeting. So that said, I would ask that we give a positive vote to this 2 million to go ahead, start with the little restaurants that are for-profit mom and pops in our community, and build out from there with the assistance of you and the enterprise folks. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rogers.
Madam Chair, I just want to be brief. I want to reiterate the need that I know is out there for the small businesses. But, you know, I'm going to just ask my fellow colleagues, this is good in spirit, but practically this is not. Basically now, we're about to allocate money, and Donna and these guys could do the job. But, you know, Donna and these, the OCF deals with nonprofits. They're going to subcontract this out to the Nebraska Enterprise Fund, which is great. But I've, the periods that I've, I mean, government giving businesses money, just straight money, because that's what we're doing, we're treating them like a nonprofit, that doesn't sound right. And we're not going to be able to give enough to this to do this. We gave it to the nonprofits because it were 501(c)(3)'s and we can do that. Even the government, when they gave them this money, they're giving them in low profit loans, and then they're writing them off. The way we're giving this sounds good, it sounds there, but this is not the way that I think it should be addressed, and the county should not be in the business to do this. So we're going to give this industry, which is a mega industry around here, in entertainment, this stuff. I mean, what's going to be the maximum amount we set? Most of the people in this industry, again, could soak up $2 million in the College World Series weekend. And so, only thing I'm saying is, they're hurting, but this is a, you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound on this. So next week, let's say we get caterers that come, we're not going to have the money to even do this. So the only thing I'm saying is that I definitely sympathize with the industry. But this is something that we should not play with, because just giving money, when PPE and all the other programs give it a low interest, and even in the bill, they wrote off all the taxes and all the other stuff to do some of this. This is, I just want to urge everybody, it sounds and it feels good, but this is a deal that the county government should not get in, particularly with all that need out there. So I understand where the votes are on, I don't, I don't understand where we'll vote on. If it goes, that's fine. Again, I'm going to vote not to do it because of the standard that it sets. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Some excellent statements there. I'm not sure, first of all, if you wouldn't have to give a business a 1099 also. Because if they're getting monies, I would think they'd have to pay tax on that, because we can't waive their federal income tax, and we're basically paying them money at this time. I really think there's some real questions on this. And I know one hotel in Omaha that was closed last spring. And that owner was losing over $500,000 per month on his operation in Omaha, Nebraska. Now, he did get the loan and some of the monies. But if you think you're giving him $40,000 or $150,000, that's like what Chris said, you know, pouring glasses of water on a large fire. But, so there are some real questions. I can't be supportive of this, and I will abstain because of the restaurant being included in it. But you do have, I would think, a 1099 issue of that income coming to a business.
Right, Jim Reif, Nebraska Enterprise Fund, you're correct, there is a 1099 event. That's, that's not a hard issue to come over. We also issue with our loan product 1098s to all of our clients, for example, every year. So it's an easy enough issue to overcome. There's obviously going to need to be caps, there's going to be need to be parameters. But there's also a huge need. Some of my favorite restaurants, Big Mama's, we helped her for months to redesign and reopen. And that's the kind of business I envision personally, that we got to get to the restaurants. PPP helped, but it only helped with two months, they were eligible for two months of payroll. They could use it for other things, but you could use it for only two months of payroll. So if your payroll was $10,000 a month, you could get $20,000 PPP. The second round that's coming out, it started, it opened yesterday, we'll start to see our banks really hit. That PPP is even more restrictive, you have to show, it's even more detailed. And some of our struggling businesses don't necessarily have the accounting systems that we would like them to have. And how do we get them that help more quickly, more rapidly to make a difference, so.
Any other questions, Commissioner Morgan?
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Boyle, did you have your, oh, Commissioner Friend, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner Friend was before you, Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks for this discussion. Obviously, it's great for me. I think, I think there's been a lot of good information out there, already disseminated. Commissioner Rogers made, Commissioner Rogers made some good points, and I certainly, I'm not going to try to contradict those. What I am going to say though is, I'm a, guys, I'm a small business owner, I have a, I actually have an insurance agency. And I knew, I told people, when all of this COVID stuff really kind of came to a head early on, I said, boy, this is going to hurt my business. And my wife goes, no, 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 everything will be fine. Nobody shut me down, nobody shuttered my doors. But I think, I think the important thing is, I started losing about $4,000 to $5,000 a month. I know what the revenue looks like, I was making this amount of money, and then suddenly I was making this amount. Now, what we ended up doing, I took a federal grant, it was not very big, but I didn't care, I took it. Because COVID and, and a lot of organizations essentially said to all of us, no, you're not going to have this storefront, you're not going to do these type of things. I mean, we're changing the way we do business. Restaurants, entertainment organizations, hospitality in general, we as a government actually forced them to shut their doors. To, for a certain period of time, I'm not saying the county did it, but in some states and in some situations, including this state, we forced them to shutter their doors. So right now, they're sitting there going, oh, you guys got 2 million bucks, now we're talking about 4 million, we're talking about 8 million? They're saying, we don't care, you want to throw us some cash? Because of the things that, not necessarily that you did, but because of some of the things that we had to deal with, we'll take it. So I respect the thought process here from both sides. But based on some of the discussions that we've had here, going all the way back to the rescension motion and rescinding motion and some of the COVID discussion, I, I have a daughter that's a, that's a drama queen, and she's actually an actress. She hasn't been in front of a live crowd in almost a year. She used to perform at the Blue Barn, and I don't even know if their doors are still open. And I know that this doesn't practically, probably target an organization like that. But we keep saying we're picking winners and losers, well, let's pick the winners and, as they, as they walk up and actually ask for, you know, for help, as the time allows. So like I said, I thought, I told, I said earlier, I thought if we had the appetite, we could move forward with some of these things. And I, I just want to move forward with it, so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments? I will just comment quickly here that, well, Commissioner Boyle, go ahead. I thought you had two times already.
This is probably number 18. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to ask if you think, Mr. Reif, if you think that we should be mimicking the federal standards of, what, what standards do you think we ought to be operating with? I mean, it should be, you know, you talked about a 1099, I think, are there other, other things we need to copy from the federal operation?
I think we need to take some of the learnings, there's been a lot of learnings. We know that bars, restaurants, entertainment venues are higher risk than a lot of our other businesses because they were forced to be shuttered. I think Commissioner Friend has responded on about that.
Yeah.
I think there's some things that have worked really well, I think there's some things that haven't worked so well. One of the struggles, we saw a lot of the businesses we worked with, it was hard to get them qualified for the PPP because of some of the information they needed. Now, there's one, that's the advantage of being able to work with people one-on-one. I'll tell you the truth, having the ability to use OCF's portal will make a world of difference. That's something NEF doesn't have, we couldn't do this but for an organization that has a portal, because all of a sudden, information comes into a place that can be streamlined. And that's one huge thing that the banks and the PPP process, for example, learned is, it took them time to get their portals up and going, but once they got them up and going, they were able to move very, very quickly. So I think that the nonprofit experience actually builds into why we feel comfortable we can move very quickly once, once we get the parameters set.
Okay, well, that, that sounds great, I can't thank you enough for being involved. That's really a wonderful, wonderful partnership you're doing. And I guess, you know, one of the things that, thank you very much. I think one of the things that I've got on my mind is, and I asked Joe, if there's some plan to spend the rest of this money, it just seems like there's something out there. And I, I don't know, I mean, we transferred the COVID money into the general fund, so I really am wondering, what are we saving it for? If it isn't to help struggling businesses, and it seems to me, and people. I really think we ought to be spending every dime on it, to tell you the truth, one way or the other. So anyway, I plan to vote yes. Thank you for your guidance, it'll be terrific.
Thank you, thank you all for your support too.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle, and I'm, I'm sorry, you won't have my support on this. I think we're opening a Pandora's box on this and giving wrong hope for businesses. We are picking and choosing an industry when I have been contacted by many other industries in this county for help. And I have directed them to the state, or just flat out said the county has taken a position that we are not going to fund businesses because that's, there's not enough money in our, our pocket to do it. I think that we, again, we're giving false hope to businesses in doing this. Not only those that aren't even included in this, which, as I read it, I think I would include the catering business as hospitality, so they could, that's another industry that I think would be available, or would have an option to apply for these dollars if this passes. But we are giving false hope to businesses that we are going to be able to help them. Is it's going to be enough to open their doors? I think not. Is this going to be enough to have them pay for their entire payroll? I think not. And so again, we are giving them a morsel, which really, in the end, in my opinion, does not help. And it opens up, and I can guarantee you that those that are watching who had asked prior to this county board for help for business, and we said no, they're going to be relining back up. My hope was, before we started to do what we're doing today, is to sit down as a board and come up with that plan on what we should spend the rest of those dollars that are in our general fund for. But it looks like everybody's in a rush to spend the money, when again, you don't have a plan really to spend the rest of this money. So I can't support this. Again, I feel for this industry, but I also feel for the other industries that reached out to me and asked me for help, and I said no. And that was just as late as yesterday afternoon, I got a call on this. But I would say that if this does passes, the catering businesses should be included in this food and beverage industry that you're talking about here. And if not, again, we're picking and choosing over industries, and I think that's wrong. We're already picking and choosing over industries, but now we're picking and choosing over size of industry, what kind of industry. And I just think that that's, that's, that's not a good thing to do, or not a good thing for the county board to do. So I won't be supporting this resolution. Commissioner Morgan, you have the last time.
I agree with you, Mary Ann. The other thing that we're missing here is I know there's been cleaners in Omaha, Nebraska that have closed their doors and done with doing business. And I know that others are down 40 to 60%. I know flower shops are down big time. We've seen Parso's close, the men's clothing store, and I know of another one that I'm not going to mention that I've heard is going to also be closing. So we're trying to do exactly what you said, you're giving a small morsel to help, and it's not going to make it happen. I mean, Old Chicago on 78th and Cass, it did a pretty fairly good takeout business, is closed for good. And I know of some others that look like they might be closing there. So it's a pretty difficult time, and I just don't think we can do enough. And we still need to be careful about our budget that affects everybody. And our mill levy does go to everyone, and we want to be sure that we're holding the line here somehow to not have any future mill levy tax increase.
Thank you. With that, there is a motion and a second on the floor, the commissioners are done commenting. I will take comments from the public on this, but I will remind you all that the city council has this chambers at 1:00, and we haven't even touched the other resolutions. If I had my druthers, I would ask that we lay all these over for a couple of weeks for further discussion and specifics, because again, I think we're rushing, we're rushing so that it is, we just don't have the specifics on it. And I'm using the same arguments that commissioners who are going to be voting for this have used on me about rushing things. And so I think it's, it's just, it's a bad thing to rush into this, so. With that, any?
Madam Chair, may I interrupt? Who, I didn't, I didn't actually, I mean, obviously there have been commissioners who spoke in support, but I don't know if I actually got a motion and a second on the item.
I thought I, I thought it was Kavanaugh and Boyle.
Okay, Mike Boyle, okay, all right.
Mike Boyle, I forgot to remember to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? All right, go ahead and vote please.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes, Commissioners Rogers and Borgeson voting no, Commissioner Morgan abstaining, all other commissioners voting yes.
Our next agenda item is resolution four, resolution allocating 2 million out of the county's general fund reserved to Dollar Energy Fund for its utility assistance program. Is there a second? I'm getting there, is there a second? Commissioner Kavanaugh, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This should be pretty pro forma, and I see that Mr. Kubat's here from MUD, speaking for the utilities community, and I believe that Dollar Energy's here as well. We've had great success with this in 2020, using CARES dollars, like the rental assistance and other assistance programs to help people impacted by COVID pay their utilities. This would just continue that through, again, the period between the end of the CARES program at December 31st and whenever we get new assistance monies, if we do, for this purpose in '21. Mr. Kubat, if you could come up for just a second, I think that, is it Lindsey?
No, Dollar Energy is on the line.
Okay. We're just continuing basically what has been in line. Okay. We're just continuing basically what has been in line between MUD and OPPD on energy, utilities assistance. Thank you for appearing here today, and I want to commend you at MUD and the OPPD partners for the success of the program in twenty twenty. As we heard earlier, the four million that was allocated was almost entirely expended by the end of the year, and I want to commend you for that. This would just continue that through this bridge, again, between the end of that and whenever we can get new assistance monies. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that's primarily correct. Just so, just to be clear, your initial four million dollar allocation, there was a requirement that the customers show a direct COVID-related financial impact to be eligible. With this four million, with this request, and again, I need to back up Rick Kubat, on behalf of the Metropolitan Utilities District and OPPD, with this request of allocation, we would like, we would desire to make the program a little bit more efficient. The guide rails would be more based on federal poverty income guidelines, of which we'd establish a threshold of three hundred percent of FPIG. In addition to that, the maximum award amount per customer would be up to five hundred dollars, or collectively for both MUD and OPPD, a thousand dollars.
And the resolution allows you to work out those details with our administration and the contract going forward, but that sounds reasonable. Again, we adjusted those in the twenty twenty program, as everybody can recall, because we started off at a lower number and went higher, just to cover the need, make it realistic in terms of people's needs. So, thanks for pointing that out. I would urge everybody to just do this. We're running on time, and this is a pretty simple, you know, doing what we've already done and had some success with. So, I'd ask for your support for this. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Rogers?
Rick, okay, clarify me if I'm wrong, because let me just say publicly, I think I told you I like the program, but I'm probably about to change my mind. Basically, is anything gonna, is anything, I'm assuming, people got their distribution to pay their rent for January at the end, or utilities? Where they were before the program closed out. So, two weeks of waiting does not put anybody there because they should have had the bills paid last time for these. So, am I safe in assuming that two weeks is not going to have an earthquake effect?
Yes and no, Commissioner. What I would say is, it's been rather abundantly clear, our program for your last four million dollars, of which I want to express a great amount of gratitude to this board, because you allowed people to keep their lights on, you know, water during a pandemic necessary for sanitation and to be able to heat their homes. That program started in August fifteenth, on middle part of August, and by the end of this calendar year, as Mr. Lorenz stated, all but fifty thousand of the four million dollar allocation that this board provided has been spent.
No, I hear you on that, Rick, but let me, again, let me clarify to you. Right now, you all have, you created the money based on COVID restrictions, okay? Don't if, don't you all have a fund, isn't there a fund for people that weren't COVID-related that you assist them with, with utility bills?
Yes, and absolutely, Commissioner, and to speak to-
Okay, wait, no, just hold on. And I don't want to interrupt you. I know I'm on time. So, there's already a fund for people that are not COVID bills. Okay. So, for people that are COVID bills, my judgment on this is that waiting two weeks to see what we get applied is not going to hurt the COVID-related people, because the system already set. It's just plug and play. You take new money and you plug it in. But this money that's being there now would supplement your fund that's already going on that doesn't have the COVID restrictions, because you're not going to keep it COVID-related.
Um, yes.
Okay, stop there. But, but it's not clean.
So, if I can speak to that, what you're talking about, Commissioner Rogers, is both OPPD and MUD had utility assistance programs before the pandemic. Those funding sources were dimes on the dollar compared to the need and what you guys did with your four million dollars. I believe our-
Who funded, who funded those?
Those were primarily funded by MUD's employees. We ask our ratepayers to donate, and then, like, heat the streets and some other philanthropic. But we're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars available in those assistance programs, not the two million dollars that you allocated. Because of, your program kicked in-
For COVID-related.
Yeah, your program kicked in on August fifteenth. Prior to that, the home phone, the, our internal small-dollar utility assistance program, we greatly diminished those funds because we were already doling out money. We were way ahead of schedule in sending funds out the door for what I would say nominally funded utility assistance programs. Then COVID hits, and then we get the spike in demand of people that, you know-
I know that. But, and when the spike hit, we paid all the, when the spike hit, everything that was owed, we paid back. Okay, so, that should be there. Again, my question is, we're not putting COVID-related restrictions on this. Are we supplementing the fund at MUD, because you're not OPBD, but I expect you to answer MUD. Basically, will this money supplement your fund for MUD to be used just in general? Because if not, I'd rather wait two weeks to see what comes down out of the CARES Act money and continue on that program. Will it supplement your fund?
Yes. And what you're saying is primarily correct. You're right on with that analysis, Commissioner Rogers. And a two-week delay, I think we could likely, you know, survive and deal with it. But, yeah, you're exactly right. This new funding will be more equivalent to the previously utility assistance programs that both OPPD and MUD had set up internally.
Which we don't contribute to.
Right.
Okay. So, I just want to make the point. I'm telling you publicly. I thought I could agree with this, but if it goes like it is, I'm not. I'd rather hold it over two weeks to make it clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Supportive of this, but I also like to be respectful of Joe Lorenz, our finance director, and what he's saying that this money's coming. And I am concerned because some of that money that we're talking about, COVID, was given to the county to reimburse us for payroll. And I can see us, as being on the finance committee for the last ten years, I can see us having a real shortfall being created if we keep approving these resolutions, and you're going to see a mill levy increase. And I see better than myself, Joe Lorenz nodding his head, and I hope the board's watching this because we will have the necessity for a mill levy increase if we keep doing this. We don't print money here. And I also, Maureen was looking over at me, we saw people, myself included, having fifty percent increases in our valuations on homes, and we had a lot of those people coming down. And we could see a real challenge for us. And Joe, you correct me, please.
What I said is that there's two hundred million dollars coming to the state of Nebraska that's going to be here by the end of the month, and that's earmarked for rent and utility assistance. And it's going to be available through Douglas County. It's going to be available through the state. It's going to be available potentially from the city of Omaha. So, there's money coming for this, and this is one where I would recommend that we lay this over for two weeks. Let's see how much money is there, and then craft a program based when we know how the funding's going to work. And I think there, as PJ says, there's a little bit of a rush to judgment here to spend this money. You know, when we really, as also Commissioner Borgensen said, we should really have a plan how we want to do this to the most appropriate sources, given that the county money is fairly limited. And probably, my suggestion would be wise to keep a little dry powder there for, you know, things that will come up. I can tell you, right now, I'm missing a meeting that I was supposed to go to. The district court is there because we're adding a new district court judge, and everybody's saying it's unfunded, both in terms of money to build the courtroom and money to staff the new district court judges, bailiffs, and things like that. So, there's other money out there for very, that are mandated county functions that are, that are also sitting out there that we have to be aware of.
Thank you. Are you?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to just pose this, to pose this question. We've heard this twice now. I'm in favor of this resolution. I guess the thing is, we're running out of time. We've got one, two, three, four. Let's just be practical here. We've already heard that this doesn't necessarily hurt a two-week layover. I would, I propose maybe that we vote on this particular item and lay the rest over. I mean, is, what does the board think at this point? I'm not making a motion. I guess I just quickly wanted to-
Well, shouldn't we lay this one over also, because that's what Joe Lorenz was saying. It's the utilities, and we need to hear what that bill's going to say. And I'll give you one other one that should have you thinking. The county's source of revenue is property taxes, okay? If you look out in Omaha, I can show you four hundred thousand square feet of office buildings vacant. I can show you sixty thousand around Hundred and Thirty-second and Center, and I'm adding that on to the four hundred. On Seventy-Eighth and Dodge, you've never seen the vacancy in that center in thirty years. The same going to the north from there. So, with that kind of thing, if I'm an owner of a property, my property is worth a lot less if there's vacancies. And I'm seeing that firsthand. So, if you have a building and applied insurance or whatever, they've stopped their project out on Hundred and Forty-Fourth, the Boys Town thing is what I've just heard in the last day. I'm telling you, when people come in on their valuations, if their center is fifty percent vacant, we're headed towards some real decision-making financially in our mill levy and the value that we'll have coming in next year is what I'm concerned with. And I think we should listen to Joe on holding off the two weeks on utilities.
Just a minute, please. Just a minute, please. I just want to clarify that the layover, in my opinion, would include all three of these because we're waiting for the word, if this item seven passes, for additional dollars for rent and utilities. And we just heard that there's no rush for the utility program to be approved today because it, again, isn't COVID-related and it funds their existing fund. So, the layover, Commissioner Friend, for your question is, I would think it should include all three, four, five, and six for two weeks.
And just to clarify one thing that the county attorney told me that I didn't think of.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, you are out of order. Joe, I have you on the list, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Thank you. Joe, come back up to the podium, please. You have the floor. Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you're next. Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Thank you. You're next. Joe, go ahead. Joe, go ahead. Thank you. You're next, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Thank you. Joe, go ahead and start talking. Okay, stop, stop. I don't have a gavel, but stop, please, stop. Joe, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify a point that the county attorney told me that I think, I didn't think of, but is valid, and that's the issue of supplanting. That if we would go ahead and improve it right now, that could be considered sup- and then we go and say, no, we're going to replace that with a money we're going to get in the future, you can make an argument that that's supplanting and wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you have the floor.
So, remember this when we come to the rules, that there are no rules. It's just luck of the draw, whatever the person with the chairmanship wants to do. There should be rules. We should have actual rules that are followed. This is something that is happening now. We need to do something now to help people. We did a ten million dollar rush-up thing at our last meeting in December that didn't help anybody except the contractors getting the ten million dollars. And so, all of the questions that were coming from Commissioner Borgerson, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Morgan, were perfectly appropriate for the ten million that was taken, and they didn't have any problem doing that. And now, we're going to direct assistance programs to people in need. Oh, my gosh, we can't do anything. We can't do anything. We got to lay it over. Well, people's bills are coming due for food and rent and utilities every single month. People don't eat in the long term. People don't pay rent in the long term. People don't pay their utilities in the long term. For a very modest amount, a lot less than we gave to the contractors on the building project that's not in any danger of going belly up, we can help these people, hundreds, thousands of them across the community. Let's just do this. We're going to get something from the stimulus package. We don't know what, and we don't know when, but it's not going to come this month. So, let's do something as this board is empowered to do today, to help people who are struggling. These are modest proposals, well-thought-out, based on programs that have worked very well in twenty twenty. We're not inventing anything new. We're just bridge financing stuff that was effective in helping people in twenty twenty. We've got partners in the community who are stepping up to do this with us. And the idea of lay it over, lay it over, certainly wasn't on any of the lips of these people when it was the ten million for the contractors to feather their nest. But now, when it gets to actual people that need help, we need to lay it over. I'm saying act now for the people. We can give them some assistance now. We should do that now. And this resolution and the ones to follow for rent should be done today. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The commissioner should not judge my motive. I mean, just because you want to be George Norris and the Midlands populace now, don't try to judge my intent on this. If you want to make the case, you can say that the project is providing jobs in this time where there is not. So, I just want to say that for the record, it has nothing to do with that. And again, Rick, I want to apologize to you and the other people that I may have talked to, because I thought this was a different thing. And I'm still supporting of it. But, Rick, it's clear that if we wait two weeks, it's not going to do that. And then you can plug money directly in, because if we get the money, we're going to administer that. Again, my issue is, right now, it's going through the general fund, and the general fund does not have the restriction. If the board is going to make the call to give general fund money to that program, then it should do that. But right now, it's just going to supplement and go there, which you already have a path for. And that, I think if OPPD and MUD want to do it, they should put more money in on that end. So, that's where I'm at, holding two weeks. Again, after the questions are taken on a different complexity, it's not the, it's not plug and play like that. So, you know, my suggestion would be, hold the two weeks. We get the money and everything flows because you will be able to backfield with the money like we did the last time. So, again, I'm just saying to you and the others that I may have talked to, I thought it was a different deal. It's not the deal I thought it was. I'm still supportive of it, but I want to do it with the CARES Act money and not this. Because it goes to the fund you already have, which is not, which I don't, I don't not support. But I think you all already have pathways to do that. Thanks.
Could I just really briefly respond to that? There are pros and cons to what you did say, Commissioner Rogers. The previous CARES Act allocation, again, because of the documentation required for that COVID-related experience, we had several thousand folks that were denied, because that's a paper trail. Deloitte required the documentation, and it was somewhat of an unwieldy program to administer. it was somewhat of an unwieldy program to administer. Our administrator came back to us and said, this is a very difficult program to operate. The one nice thing about the potential of doing it the way that we discussed today is now we're back into the realm where the guide rails become those federal poverty income guidelines. It would be a more efficient program if it's administered through these dollars. And perhaps, and I don't know where the board is, is maybe there's an alternative of finding middle ground, of doing partial funding, like $1 million for each entity now, and then we can revisit what the money's coming in the door with the county later and have that discussion. I'm just throwing out there as a possibility.
Yeah, but Rick, while you're there, and I still got time. But the issue with COVID is not straight poverty. That's my deal. The issue with COVID is not straight poverty. And so I don't, you know, you got, you got that for the people with poverty. This is COVID. So ministering under your poverty restrictions is a whole nother thing. You just proved my point. Plus, you all haven't turned down people from the other program? There's not paperwork in other programs?
The funding source from the other programs doesn't, it doesn't fill the need.
But the point is, it's poverty, and COVID is not straight poverty. So that's why I want to make the clean deal on it. I hear you. And you know you're good with me, but I just wanted to make sure.
I appreciate that.
I respect what I told you, and it's changed. And I want to say publicly to you that it's changed. So that's why I'm changing where I'm at.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Commissioner Mike Boyle?
Thank you. I just want to say that, you know, we need to lift the curtain. This is not the normal source of our revenue. This is not property taxes in this fund. It came from the federal government to help people. So you can call it the general fund, but in my mind, I don't know how in the hell that happened, that we actually were able to take millions and plop it into our funds and buy whatever we want. I mean, you know, and it'll be spent properly. I'm not challenging anybody's motives or anything else. But I do support this because this is exactly, exactly what COVID was supposed to, the funding was supposed to be for. So, I mean, it's, it is, it's COVID money. And I do want to mention to you, you know, we've got a tax increase looming because of the Justice Center that we're building, the courthouse and the Juvenile Center. Then I want to ask, where are we putting this new judge? Does anybody, this is what I'm talking about, not getting enough information. This is the first time I've heard that. You know, we need to set up some kind of a system where you tell commissioners what's going on. So do we have a space ready for this judge? Anybody know? Yes? No? So there's no space. So we're already building a building and we don't have space for a judge that's being appointed. Does that make you feel confident in what we're doing? It doesn't me. You know, we have to know these things to provide the services we're supposed to. Now, that, the courthouse is number one at that site because it's across the street from the main building, which is why I wanted the MUD site, why I proposed that to Commissioner Borgerson a couple of years ago. So anyway, let's, let's get some information on these things. The more information, the better, even if it's bad news. And let's put people first. This whole, all this COVID money, and you call it the general fund, it's not the general fund. It's COVID money that somehow Deloitte says we can spend it on whatever we want. I want to spend it on people. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I just wanted to make a clarification of, again, the CARES Act dollars that we waited to the end of the year, or we did mid-year, we did exactly what we did with every other governmental entity, and that was to pay for the salaries of our public safety and public health employees. So it went into our general fund. The rest of the money, at the end of the year, we passed a resolution sometime in December to say that that would be moved over to the general fund as well. So we can keep mixing the words if we want, but these are general fund dollars that were previously CARES Act dollars that were to be utilized for COVID-related issues. And that's how the rental program and the utility programs came about. I think putting all of the conversation aside and hitting on the one point that we found out was that there's additional dollars that could potentially be coming to Douglas County for these specific programs from the federal government for the COVID-related items. We've already heard from Rick Kubat that laying this over for two weeks until we get more clarification and that we also have, again, a little bit further plan for our part, that we hold these three items over and then bring them back for discussion. So that's where I'm at with this. And... Well, I'm going to stop talking because it's not on. How's that, Commissioner Boyle?
No, I'm just saying, everybody should have the light.
Well, I didn't know it wasn't.
I understand. I'm just saying. Don't be offended.
So with that, with that, are there any other discussions from board members? Commissioner Kavanaugh, you've already talked twice. Well, there's people from the public. There are people from the public that would like to speak. So Larry, go ahead and come down and speak on this item.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh have all brought up some pretty good things. You know, there used to be a thing called common sense, reasonableness, or the smell of reasonableness, or the lack of it. When you put all the pieces together here, if a lot of office space is vacant, we're building more and more things around Omaha with tax increment financing and building such as the Juvenile Center, under the theory that if you build it, they will come. Well, they don't seem to be coming. And we just heard it out of a real estate professionals about. What happens to the money that goes into TIF financing, for example? It's not, it's not real clear to us citizens that it's not a scam. What it seems like is that the developers are getting a tax break. It seems like they don't have to pay property taxes. And now they want to increase that to 25 years? But there's a phrase in there, and there's some of these on the agenda this afternoon, that you people should go and say, stop this. We don't have money for COVID. We don't have money for general rent assistance. Why are we giving money away to developers to build things that are going to be vacant? And then who's going to pay to tear them down? Well, what it looks like, and it sounds like, and it smells like is if I live in my house until I'm dead, I will pay what they're giving away in tax increment financing because my property values will go up. Well, how's that going to happen if these people don't come? Farnham Street? What if these people don't stay? What if they don't come to the new Coda, the new hotel and this and that that they're building? And my God, drive out west, 144th and then south? Where the hell are all these people going to come from that are going to fill these things you're building? That money should be going to this body for whatever, for the people, not for the developers. Let's put common sense back in our government, for God's sakes.
Anyone else? Again, we're going to lose the chamber in about six minutes. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
I've been sitting here for two and a half hours. I wanted to speak on the rental assistance thing. But I also want to speak on this one. That, I want to say to Commissioner Rogers, the utility assistance is, I've got to say, it's a really complicated process. The New Life Family Alliance has been through that repeatedly. The kind of evidence you have to provide is just really complex. You have to go to the bank and get your bank statement and take it to people. You have to get proof from your employer that you were employed prior to getting the COVID or having to take off for providing tutorial for your children at home. And I think the utility assistance ended, I don't think they were paid for January, they were paid for December only. So delaying two weeks is going to create significant problems for people on utilities. I just want to say that. I guess I also would like to address Senator, Congressman Morgan, because I've asked several times the rationale for leaving mortgages off when it's approved nationally. I see that even the description of the CARES Act, the money is coming in January, only talks about rental assistance, but it's really rental and mortgage. Mortgage is included in the CARES Act. What is the difficulty that you find with the mortgage, doing mortgages? I understand that you've objected to that. And you've said you had it.
... conversations with Deloitte concerning the mortgages. And I don't know, we've got just a few minutes. I don't know if Joe wants to respond on that issue because I was depending on him when we talked about the mortgages of trying to do something there. It just becomes...
Commissioner Kavanaugh, you're out of order. Thank you. You're out of order. It's public comment. It's out of, you're out of order. Come on, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Mr. Commissioner Kavanaugh, stop. Please. Stop.
He asked me a question, and I tried to respond.
Okay, thank you.
You're calling him a peanut gallery?
All right. I am shutting off debate right now. There is a motion on the floor and a second for item four. Please vote.
This is to approve the item?
Yep.
Thank you. Motion passes. Commissioners Rogers, Borgerson, and Morgan voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
On items five and six, do we have a motion to lay over? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
One moment, please. And I, well, it's your call, Madam Chair, obviously, but I know there's, I'm aware there's someone on Zoom who wanted to speak about the rent.
We're going to bring it back in two weeks. So we'll take it up then. Thank you. No comment. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you have, do not have the floor. Please vote.
Sorry, I still got to update this. Okay, thank you. I should be starting. There we go.
This is voting for the layover of items five and six. You don't have the floor, Commissioner.
Motion passes. Commissioners Kavanaugh, Marine Boyle, Mike Boyle voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Item seven is a consideration of whether Douglas County should apply for the 2021 CARES Act Rental Utility Assistance Fund. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item eight is a resolution requesting the Justice Center Development Corp. conduct its meeting during the county board meetings on Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. in the legislative chambers of the Civic Center. Commissioner Boyle, is there a second? Commissioner Boyle made the motion. Commissioner Rogers seconded it. Please vote.
Commissioner Rogers. Oh, there we go. Motion to lay over passes seven to zero.
The rest are committee reports that we will, again, have further discussion on the legislative next meeting. There is no meeting Monday, or because of Martin Luther King, the offices will be closed January 18th in observance of Martin Luther King Day, and the county board will not meet on Tuesday, January 19th. The next scheduled county board meeting will be Tuesday, January 26th. We do have a need for executive session for litigation, personnel, union negotiations.
And legal advice.
And legal advice.
In room 903.
And it's in 903. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Friend, to go into executive session in room 903. Please vote. Yeah, go ahead and take a break. And let's, yeah, 1:00 in the room 903 by the time we get up there.
Motion passes seven to zero. Motion passes seven to zero.
...